Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October 20th, 2025, regular meeting of the Rochester Hills City Council. We'll call this meeting to order. We have, as for those members of the public here wishing to make public comment on an item that is on the agenda or an item that is not on the agenda, we would just ask that you please fill out one of the blue public comment cards in the back and hand it to Ms. Whisperin' here so that we can make sure that we call on you by your correct name and at the proper time in the agenda. And as always, please remember that public comment is limited to three minutes. Ms. Whisperin', if you could please take the role.
Good evening. President Deal?
Here.
Vice President Karla?
Here.
Mr. Blair?
Here.
Ms. Moreland?
Here.
Ms. Mancioli?
Here.
Ms. Newbauer?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
President Deal, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if everyone will please rise, our youth council representative will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of agenda, I have not been made aware of any requests to modify or alter the agenda. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. Oh, with one exception, I would request that, I should have remembered, that we could move items number, item number, the first five, four items from new business up to presentations so that we can handle those resolutions. Does anyone have any objection to that? No objection? All right, so, so moved by, we'll say.
Could be a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment to the motion, very well. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. That moves us on to council and youth committee reports. And Sasha, take it away.
Oh, sorry, I don't know how to work my. Good evening, President Deal, Mayor Barnett, council members, and citizens of Rochester Hills. My name is Sasha Joshi, and I'm an 11th grader at Rochester Adams High School. I have been on the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council for this past year, and I serve on the Historic District Committee. This past month, our youth council has been, has volunteered at many different events. We were at the Rochester Hills Fire Department Open House, where we helped firefighters with the obstacle course in the Sparky costume. We also volunteered at the Community Foundation Tailgate at the Rochester Hills Banquet Center, where we helped sell ornaments to benefit the Community Foundation charity. We attended the Stonewall Pumpkin Fest as well, and helped clean the pumpkin carving supplies, delivered pumpkins to people, and ended up carving our own pumpkins as well. This month, we're grateful to be participating in the annual Light the Village event, as well as attending the swearing-in ceremony for the new city council. This month, we are also planning to solidify the details for our annual winter event. We aim to bring together our community for a fun, inclusive celebration that highlights our city's spirit and youth. Our next regular meeting will be November 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that report, Sasha. Next up, we have Mr. Walker.
Thank you, President Deal. Ms. Whisperin', if you would share my screen, please. So get a head start on your holiday shopping at the OPC's Artisan Holiday Market on Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Discover one-of-a-kind gifts and handcrafted items from over 90 local artists and crafters. Admission is $3, benefiting OPC's enrichment and arts department. Open to everyone, bring a friend, Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. Hope to see you there. Thank you, President Deal.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Mrs. Newbauer.
Thank you, President Deal. For some reason, my pictures didn't load, but I did want to say that on October 8th, we went to the fire department open house, and while we were there, there was actually a fire call that was done. So about 10 or 11 of our firemen rushed out of the open house and went to go handle an apartment fire, which it was kind of remarkable to watch, frankly, how they got the call, they rushed out, and then when they were done, they came back and were still hanging out with the kids. And Sparky was still taking pictures, and I thought it was kind of amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you to our fire department, their amazing hard work at protecting the community. On October 7th, the Planning and Economic Development Department did their master plan open house, where it was open to the public, and everybody was able to come in and give some feedback and see a presentation about our master plan. So I want to thank them for an amazing job that they did doing their presentation. You're still able to look at the master plan online, and one of the wonderful things that they've done in the planning department is that they have an interactive map where you're able to look at the master plan per area. And what they did is they divided it by where the high schools are, so you can look at where Rochester is, Adams is, Stony Creek is, and that'll give you more of a guide as to how to kind of navigate the master plan. So just wanted to thank the Planning and Economic Department, they did an amazing job, and also the firefighters. Thank you so much.
Very good. Next up, Mrs. Mancioli.
Thank you, President Deal. Ms. Whisperin', could you share my slides? I haven't shared slides or done a report for a couple of meetings, so I'm gathering it all up for one night. And because I knew that Jen was here tonight for RAR, I figured I had to start off with the RAR annual meeting is this Friday. If you want to find out more about what RAR is doing, please attend the annual meeting, and you'll hear more from Ms. Thor later in the agenda. I also had to make sure I got Lindsay's picture up there, because she's the president of RAYA, and she was at the HOA open house a couple of weeks ago. And this is the year of Pat McKay, because he is also the parade's grand marshal this year, so it's good to kick off the season with Pat and come to this. But RAYA, it is a nonprofit organization that helps families and students in need, so please listen more to the annual report that Ms. Thor is going to give us in a little while. RAYA, RAR is the other one that keeps me going, trying to get the RAS and the YAS together. Drive past the building, because they have made some tremendous improvements to the outside of the building. As you can see here, there is now a covered archway going in. It is beautiful, it's, RAR has made significant investments in the facility and wanted to make sure that we had an entrance that really was an entrance to the building. They've been out everywhere, and they were at the Trails and Treats last week. Glad to see them there. But RAR is also doing their master plan, and it is open for your comments 30 days until the middle of November. The link for the McKenna site is online here, so that you can please give comments to RAR on their master plan and the future of recreation in our community. They are also doing, because I knew we had our Auburn Oaks families here, wanted to let you know about this activity that's going to benefit SCAMP, which helps our inclusive and special needs students. So there is a Night of Laughs on Saturday, November 15th. All the proceeds from this event will be benefiting our SCAMP camps. So please, if you've got the opportunity on Saturday, November 15th, join us down at Rochester Mills for a Night of Comedy and supporting our SCAMP camps for RAR. I also put in usually a plug on committees, and in December, we do a lot of renewal of committee appointments. This is that time for residents. If you are interested in getting on a committee, there is a spot on the city's website under government to select committees, boards, and commissions, and put in your questionnaire saying you would like to be on a committee for Rochester Hills. On this same page, there's a section here where you can find out all about the different committees, what they do, how often they meet, and just let us know, because come December, we'll be either renewing people or trying to figure out who's going to fill an open spot on a committee. So please, sign up to be on a committee. Sometimes we don't take new people in December, but then somebody resigns in May, and we're suddenly looking for who's left to check the box for that committee. Like to have new names and new faces for us to consider as we go into that appointment process. This is also Mental Health Month, and many people, you don't know from looking at us that we are struggling in our personal lives with challenges. And so I just want to make sure that people are out there checking what your health insurance will cover and what resources are available here locally. We have the Resilience Center that opened up in the Brooklands area, so please find those opportunities to take care of your mental health and recognize that you may be looking at somebody, and you have no idea the challenges they're going through because they hide it well. But mental health is an extremely important piece for us. And then, last but not least, I have pages and pages of Halloween safety. Be careful with your trick-or-treaters. We do have a curfew time for trick-or-treating, a week from Friday, so make sure your kids are visible, that they're safe, that you go with them, don't go to the houses with the lights off, maybe they ran out of candy already, and make sure you are able to trick-or-treat. And for parents, again, just like that start of the school year, don't put your kids' names out there, your addresses, don't make it easy for somebody with bad ideas to come find your children and do harm. So want to make sure you're, everybody is safe and has an enjoyable time on Halloween. And that's all I have, President Deal.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Whisperin'.
Next up, Mr. Blair.
Thank you, President Deal. I've just got a quick public safety announcement. Christine, if you would put my screen up. Every couple of weeks, I'm bringing Scam Watch, just to help push back against the scammers that are hustling some of our residents. What's going on with my screen there? It looks.
It's a scam.
Can we try that again? Let's, let's, let's do this here. Let's try it again. Okay, we're just going to go like this. There we go.
It's the monitor, it's not even still on the monitor.
Yeah, that's weird. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're just going to go like this. We're going to shrink the ribbon, we're going to put that up like that. There we go. Okay, cool, there. And we're going to zoom in. Okay, so if we read the crime blotter, our residents are getting swindled by scammers, so I push back with a little bit of, a little bit of education. And I got a doozy this week. I got an email from PayPal, and it said, "You added a new address." And if you look at the email, it actually came from PayPal. Like, that's usually one of the things you check, right? It's where did that email come from? But if you look at the body of that email, it says, you know, "You've bought a MacBook Pro Max for $1,200, call this 800 number." That's obviously a scam. How on earth did that get through? That email came legit from PayPal, but there's clearly a scam message in there. What happened? I'm going to give you a hint. You can go in, and if you want to buy something, maybe a gift for somebody on PayPal, you can add their address to your PayPal account. And PayPal didn't limit the length of this address field here. So that scam message is actually the second line of the address. That bypasses the scam, the spam filters, and they're trying to get you to call that number. So again, a reminder, stop, think, and protect yourself. If you get suspicious emails, suspicious phone calls, suspicious text message, is that something you'd expect, something out of the blue? And if in doubt, just delete it. It's probably not going to kill you. Back to you, President Deal.
Thank you very much. And there being no further council and youth committee reports, that moves us to presentations, and we'll kick it off with item number 2025-0436, the annual report by Avondale Youth Assistance.
Good evening, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I'm your council. My name is Michael P. Diggs. I am your Avondale Youth Assistance chair. I've been for a while, and I'm so glad you're here today. I need you to use your. That one?
Perfect.
Am I talking now? All right. I love being here, because I love talking with you guys, because I tell you what, you are phenomenal supporters, and I got to tell you, the presentation here is going to be a little different, but it's going to be good. Hopefully, you'll all understand it. It's for the last year, our year starts in July, and it goes until the end of June, so hopefully it works out good. Just an update, I'll understand all this in a minute, my family, my kid, four-year-old's Mia, and then my son and his daughter-in-law. A year ago or so, I had a new baby in the other family, and about five weeks ago, she had a liver transplant. So that's me and her in the hospital, just living life, and after her transplant. So life's good there. Anyway, we'll get into that in a minute, and I'll explain why that kind of becomes important or becomes pertinent, if you will. But Youth Assistance, our bottom line, as you all know, is to strengthen youth and families and prevent the reduce, prevent and reduce delinquency. In other words, we want to pull those kids off the fence and bring them on our side. We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to live a great, healthy life. A little bit about us, we're 501(c)(3), as you know, there's 26 of us, as you heard about number 20. Another one, Rochester, is also in our, every school district has one, and our caseworker is Paula Johnson. Paula came to us a year and a half ago, and she has just really been doing a great job. Our current board members are here, as you can read, and here's where it becomes so important, and this is what's so phenomenal. About a year ago, after my, my first, or my second granddaughter was born, she ended up in a hospital, she had had many hospital stays, we found out she had a liver issue, and obviously was in need of a liver transplant. I was gone for most of this last year. Between my kids, in that, the first couple you saw that were in St. Louis, I was there for five weeks helping them move, and between all the hospital stays where my other son lived in Grand Rapids area, going back and forth, I'm telling you, I was, I was gone a lot of times for these meetings for the last year. And if it wasn't for Carol and the team putting it together, I walked in at the end of September this year. Now, we had a small little group in the beginning, and I walked in in September, and we had more people than we could fit in the room. They're all wanting to be on Youth Assistance. They all want to be involved, and they all want to get going, and it had nothing to do with me. So it's the team we have that puts things together, and as a vice chair, Carol and his, Carol has just taken off and just made it an absolute wonderful success for us. On another note, our, we have a new treasurer, Rebecca Swicki. As many of you know, Stephanie Marita was a former councilperson here. She left us to move on after her son got out, and her husband, and they all kind of retired, and are living a great life. We have an awesome gal from Troy, who is part of our team, who, we have a student rec, which is phenomenal, which is, we've had one from Avondale, and it's actually a family. Ryan is an elementary school student who is working in his brother's footsteps, who's a high school student, who's working in his brother's footsteps, who is still on our board, but has graduated high school. So it's kind of, really kind of fun that we're doing all that. And then, like I said, you know, we lost Brian Jones from Troy, and we lost Stephanie Marita. So we've had some people pick up pieces, and it's just absolutely wonderful. Overall, 327 hours time talent and treasure has put in by this group of people over the last year. We had student rec, we do now, as you will see, you also receive kind of a year-end review from us. And if you open it up, there is a student rec form, okay? And if you want more, we can get you more. But we like to recognize students for the personal achievement, the leadership, for the community efforts, and we're not looking for the kids that have the great academics, we're not looking for the heroes in the football or basketball team, we're looking for the kids who are the unsung heroes. Kids in your neighborhood, kids that go to school and go to class in the Avondale Schools that have had hard times, that have had issues, that have overcome obstacles. There's a lot of those kids out there that'll never get recognized for being the smart kid, for being the brave kid, or being the athlete, but we want to recognize them for being the kid that they are, being the student and person they are, because they are phenomenal to us as well. Applications are good through the 27th of next year, and we look at grades six through 12, so if you can do that. Help Thrive, we've had back to, our back-to-school event where we have kids, we actually do backpacking, and we, or not backpacking, but backpack events, we give them a backpack, we give them school supplies, we actually buy some clothes for them so that when they go to school on the first day, they actually feel like they want to be there in school, and they're not just wearing something that they're very, you know, dirty or whatever. And these are kids that are underprivileged, most of them are caseload kids that we deal with. Shop with a Hero, we had 12 students, that was a combination between us and Pontiac Youth Assistance with Auburn Hills going at the Meyer in Auburn Hills. So that was really neat. We do Blessings in a Backpack. And Circle of Friends. And Circle of Friends is a program that was started by one of our, he's our treasurer, Matthew Lucas, but he's also a school teacher, special ed school teacher. And he does, once a week, he has kids come in, and they do events, and they do this. He opens up the doors, and he basically says, "Look, if you need some quiet time, if you need to meet some friends, if you just need a place to go and hang and feel like you're wanted," that's where they come. And then they start getting together, and they go on events, and they do things. So Matthew is really putting a program together that is really welcoming for all students. We had seven families enjoy some holiday between Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners with the help of the Moose Lodge in Costco. Screenagers, it's an award-winning program that we got started, kicked off, as we do. Our philosophy with Avondale is we kick off the programs, and then we give it to the schools and hope that they can keep it going. So far, they're keeping it going, and they're really excited about the way they're navigating that. Brig for Change is another one that we helped them get, get up and running in the Avondale School District, and that is just another phenomenal program that a lot of teachers start out in the beginning, they give them a chance to take a breath, take a little, get their mind ready, and then they're ready to start class, because obviously, between running all the classes, doing so many different things, all that goes on that way. We have a new program, Love and Logic, we're starting up this year. It's already got a teacher from the, from the district that wants to really get involved in it. I know it's not a new program, but it's new to Avondale, and we want to get that up and running and get that moving as well. So we're kind of excited about that. Where our caseworker, and always we talked about, she handles all kinds of behavioral issues, all kinds of, anything that, from assaults, courtesies, drugs, all kinds of things. And we, her caseload was 130 students, like, between July, June and July, or June the 30th and, or the July and June this year. They're referred by parents, students, teachers, and to the courts, and she, she stays very busy with us. The hard one to get is that the average kid, or average student that she's getting is around 12.2 years of age. And that's tough to imagine, that we're pulling these kids for a lot of these things that are going on. So they're getting younger and younger. We, through Oakland County ARPA, as well as through our own funds, we helped 50 families. Could have been they needed some help with their appliance, not appliances, but yeah, they may have needed a new appliance, they made it, they needed some hygiene products for the kids as they started to grow up. Some of them may need to pay rent, because they were behind in rent, there was a family that had an issue with a fire in the house, and we helped them there. So a lot of things get done, so we can help these kids, because we know, obviously, that if we're not helping the kids, and they're not thriving and surviving, then they're, they're not in school as well. And I know I was only given a short amount of time, so I spoke very fast, but I got to say that we have many sponsors, you guys being the biggest one, and I am just so blessed that you give us a chance to come in here, a chance to see you guys, a chance to talk to you guys, and let you know that we are so appreciative of what you're doing. I can only tell you that, for those who don't know, I got involved in Avondale Youth Assistance in 2000, so even though I retired 15 years ago, I'm still running a board and still happy as a pig in mud as to how we do things. So I can't say enough on great, and like I said, I still got to reach out to Carol, and I know she's, there's rumors she might be leaving us, but I'm going to try and make sure that doesn't happen, but we'll see. I can't, I can't predict the future, but I just want to say thank you, especially to her and for all your support and everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation here this evening. We do have some council comments. We'll start, Mrs. Moreland.
Thank you, President Deal, and thank you, Mike, for coming tonight and sharing all the amazing things that are happening with Avondale Youth. You know, it is great that we now have expanded our board, that we do have a Rochester Hills Youth Council member in Brennan, and we're excited about that. And Mike, I think that you have been such a key, played a key role in developing our business relationships with our local businesses in Auburn Hills, and I think that's really made an, had a great impact. You bring, and our team has been able to bring in some great programs and partnership with teachers. I think that's been really an exciting growth for our, our board. And our awards program, our awards program has grown every single year, and to me, that is evidence that Youth Assistance is really making a difference in these kids' lives and in their families' lives. And Mike, I just thank you for leading that and leading that charge. Thank you, President Deal.
Thank you very much. And with that, that takes us to item number 2025-0440, Fiscal Year 2026 Nonprofit Service Contract, Avondale Youth Assistance. Yes, Ms. Moreland.
Thank you, President Deal. With, with all that we've just seen in this presentation, and with all the exciting things that are happening there, I move the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, Ms. Moreland, I think you might have to recuse yourself because you sit on the Youth Assistance Board.
On the board.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Mancioli. I'll read the resolution, there being no further discussion. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council approves the fiscal year 2026 nonprofit service contract between the City of Rochester Hills and the Avondale Youth Assistance in the amount of $16,000, commencing January 1st, 2026, and concluding December 31st, 2026, and further authorizes the mayor to execute a contract on behalf of the city." All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us to the next presentation on our agenda, which is 2025-0437, Annual Report by the Paint Creek Trailway Commission. Good evening.
Okay, can, can you hear me? Okay. Hi there. So my name is Ingrid Cliffel, I'm here on behalf of the Paint Creek Trailways Commission, and thank you for having me. here on behalf of the Paint Creek Trailways Commission. And thank you for having me here this evening. So as I I see, I recognize some of the names here and certainly some of the commissioners. Um, you're well aware that the Paint Creek Trailways or Trail is an eight point nine mile linear trail that extends from City of Rochester up through City of Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, Orion Township into the village of Lake Orion. Um, it was established in nineteen eighty-three-ish when the land was purchased from the railroad. That was no longer, um, functioning. And, um, an interlocal agreement was, was drafted at that time, which established the Paint Creek Trailways Commission. And gen, you know, in in essence, the commission manages the trail and each member unit is responsible for maintenance of the trail as it runs through that community. Um, let's see. Looking at what Trailways Commission did in twenty twenty-five, it was a difficult year for the Trailways Commission because in the spring we lost both our trail manager and our assistant trail manager. And I started seven weeks ago. So I'm kind of new. I've hit the ground running and I have new learning every day, but it's fun. One of our biggest projects that we're working on right now is replacing the bridge at mile marker thirty-one point seven, which is in the City of Rochester. And all the bridges are about a hundred years old. So my request to you is have your engineers check out the bridges within City of Rochester Hills, just so that the trail can continue to be a safe place. But we were able to collaborate with City of Rochester and we got, uh, four grants from the MDNR, from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan, Oakland County Parks and a TAP grant. So it's largely funded through grants. Another project that we were working on was trail etiquette. And there was a brochure that we put out with the friends and I gave each one of you a copy. Um, since it is a multi-use trail, you've got, uh, cyclists, you've got hikers, you've got equestrian use and you've got, um, who am I forgetting? Skiing in the winter. We need to make sure to try to have all of the users be able to use the trail together harmoniously. So one of, so the trail etiquette brochure helps to promote that. We also have a mounted patrol from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, which is on horseback. And we have a bike patroller and they're seasonal. But some of the biggest complaints that they receive are about, um, E vehicles, if you will. So my concern is the safety of trail users. So that's going to be a topic that we'll probably look at in more detail in twenty twenty-six. Uh, we had a, some encroachments that we dealt with this past year. One was in City of Rochester Hills, another was in Oakland Township. So we were able to resolve those encroachments, but I'm sure that the commission's going to have me trying to identify other encroachments and come up with a way to address them. Let's see, looking forward to twenty twenty-six, and like I said, I'm new, but I'm learning. I'm looking forward to picking up our update of the master plan. So that will, and another master plan. Yep. So that will help give the commission a roadmap for the next five years. And it also allows us to apply through, for grants through places like MDNR. So that will be exciting. And we'll be certainly looking for any input for visioning for the next five years. Uh, license agreements, we have various businesses that use parts of our trail. And so I've kind of been a bill collector lately, getting those license fees collected from the last, uh, from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. I got confirmation today that the last one has been submitted for payment. So I'm happy with that. But we may look at trying to get, you know, update our lease agreements or streamline it so that we don't have this problem going ahead. Uh, what else? Partnerships. I'm really excited that I've been able to team up with a lot of other, or I've been putting feelers out with Trout Unlimited, Dinosaur Hill, and we've actually got a joint project going on with Oakland Township Parks and Rec. They were approved for the Detroit Institute of Arts Inside Out Program. So we will have a couple pieces of artwork displayed along the trailway in Oakland Township. But talking with the representative from the DIA, she said, apply next year for a project that will go the entire length of the trailway. So I'm looking forward to that. A couple just reminders in it, well, the one reminder in addition to inspection of the bridges is that we do resurface the trailways every roughly fifteen years. So just please set aside some money in your budget to make sure that it's there for when we need to do that. And I'm guesstimating that resurfacing will happen roughly twenty thirty or twenty twenty-three, somewhere in that window. So if anyone has any questions, feel free. Otherwise, thank you very much for having me.
Well, thank you very much for being here and your presentation here this evening. Uh, Mr. Walker.
Don't go anywhere, Ingrid. We're not done with you. First, welcome. Thank you very much for being here this evening. This is a wonderful opportunity to kind of give us an overview of this cherished amenity, this, what we call a linear park in our community. So we look forward to ongoing relationship, albeit the trail is just over forty years old. We've been fortunate that in those forty years, we've only had a handful of trail managers. Maybe that I could count on one hand. So you have joined a very prestigious group of individuals. You have a vast amount of knowledge. That's obviously why we hired you. So we appreciate you and we thank you for all the effort that you put forth already. You've made great strides getting us back on track. We wandered there for a bit, so we appreciate you. And then you you really hit the streets running. I know that project, that million dollar bridge, if anybody's been down Woodward lately in Rochester, where they've got that blocked off, there's a bridge just north of there. That's an old trestle bridge, hundred year old railroad bridge that that needs to be replaced. So we're going to come through hopefully systematically over the next several years and start to put free span bridges. Cause you can imagine the pilings or piers into the river are not good for log jams and other obstruction. So these free span bridges will be the right way to go. But doing bridge projects is something I'm sure you have a lot of experience with. Just being sarcastic.
This is my second one, but.
Yeah, exactly.
So this bridge is going to be fourteen feet wide. So it will be great. It will be universally accessible and also able to accommodate emergency vehicles and maintenance vehicles.
Yeah, like you said, this is the second one we've done in recent history. One came through in Oakland Township not that long ago. And now we have this one in Rochester. But again, they're all going to need to be replaced. They're hundred year old railroad bridges. But just to put it in perspective, uh, the number of people that use the Paint Creek at the end of July, we put trail counters in last year or the year before in the Rochester Hills section now by Tinkin. And through the end of July, the Paint Creek Trail had a hundred and forty-six thousand people traversing that section year to date, as compared to the Clinton River Trail at only a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it is staggering the number of people that use that section of trail. It is a cherished amenity that we appreciate and we appreciate you. So thank you very much for being here. We look forward to a long and prosperous career as Paint Creek Trailway Manager. See you tomorrow night.
Yes, indeed.
Once again, thank you for that presentation here this evening. And that moves us on to twenty twenty-five dash zero four four one, fiscal year twenty twenty-six nonprofit service contract, Paint Creek Trailways Commission. Now, as I understand it, Mr. Walker and Mrs. Moreland serve on that committee, so they'll recuse themselves from this vote. But we do have a motion by, uh, Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by, uh, Mrs. Mungiole to approve. And I'll go, and I don't see any further discussion on this item, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Uh, resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council approves the fiscal year twenty twenty-six nonprofit service contract between the City of Rochester Hills and the Paint Creek Trailways Commission in the amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars commencing January first, twenty twenty-six and concluding on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and further authorizes the mayor to execute a contract on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes unanimously. And that moves us on to our next presentation of the evening, which is, uh, item number... Item number twenty twenty-five dash zero four three eight, annual report by the Rochester Area Neighborhood House. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. I'm Mike Drian and I have with me, uh, Kim Ronan, who's my fund development director. Uh, thank you, uh, President Deal, uh, Mayor Barnett and the city council for giving me the opportunity to present today. Uh, I'm sure many of you know who we are, of course. Uh, so Neighborhood House, um, we've been around for about fifty-five years and our mission is really to walk the path towards sustainability with our neighbors during, during times of hardship. And, um, of course, many people are surprised to learn that there is poverty that exists in our, uh, our very affluent communities. Um, we serve five communities, which are Rochester, Rochester Hills, Auburn Hills, Oakland Township and Addison Township. And the poverty rate over those five communities is about five and a half percent. Rochester Hills is, is a bit lower at four, four point nine percent. Uh, so we serve the poor, uh, but we also serve a community that United Way calls the Alice Community, which are asset limited, income constrained, but employed. So these are folks that are working hard every day, um, trying to get by, haven't accumulated any savings or any type of assets, um, but are employed. And so you can imagine any bump in the road, whether it be an illness, uh, or a car repair, um, puts them in a, in an emergency where they may be evicted. Um, the fact of the matter is, uh, we sixty-three percent of the people we serve are in poverty. Another fifty, or fifty-nine percent are female. Uh, those are the caretakers usually. Uh, twenty-six percent are single, single females, uh, raising a family. And twenty-three percent are on fixed income, either being disabled or a senior. And so our goal is to empower those folks towards self-sustainability. In twenty twenty-four, we distributed four hundred and thirty-six thousand meals to the community. Those were over, uh, six hundred, uh, families or households benefited from that. That equates to over five hundred thousand pounds of food. Um, in twenty twenty-five, we're already up ten percent from that. So we're, we're continuing to see the demand. Uh, we also through partnership with Kids Empowered On The Move, uh, distribute meals to the homeless. Uh, we started that program last year and it's, it's grown significantly this year. Uh, through our clothes closet, we distributed over twenty-eight thousand , uh, items of clothing, uh, to those in need in our community. Our special events, uh, which would include the, the Christmas giving tree, as well as our blast off to school, uh, served over a thousand families and over thirteen hundred, uh, children. Uh, and in our financial assistance, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, our fish, financial assistance, um, is part of our strive to thrive program where we'll work directly with the client, seeking financial assistance to try to really look into their budget and put them on a path to self-sustainability. And last year, we avoided seventy evictions by helping to pay for rent. So what do we do for specifically with the Rochester Hills grant? Most of the grant we use towards paying for rent, uh, for, uh, residents that were behind or in eviction. So, um, as I mentioned, this is part of our strive to thrive program. Uh, the client comes in requesting rent, um, and we actually work to develop a budget, look where they can make improvements on the income side, on the expense side, and ultimately get them to a pathway towards self-sufficiency. Um, that involves a wellness plan that they have to make steps of progress towards. And I'm happy to say with the help of Rochester Hills, we, we made nine grants to nine households that impacted sixteen individuals. That included four seniors and seven children. Uh, it also includes four single mothers with children. And two of these were actually single grandmothers raising children. And three of these households were facing evictions, meaning that they were in the, in the process of, uh, getting rich to be evicted. Um, so I'm happy to say that with your help, uh, our neighbors' lives were directly impacted by the Rochester Hills grants and they were able to stay in their homes. Just a quick case study, and this is one of the seniors, uh, even the most diligent money manager can expect, experience unexpected circumstances. Ally, an older adult valued living independently and used, has used our services to help do that. Despite her continued efforts, uh, life served up a couple surprises. Uh, her medical copays and rent increased and she also wanted to have a rant, ramp installed, uh, that the property management denied that claim. And so she turned to us, we awarded her a utility grant to bring her utility bills up. And we also supported relocation to a senior housing complex, play, senior housing complex with affordable rent and utilities and transportation included. Um, so this is someone that now is in a sustainable position directly with the help of your grant. And I'll just move it. So I just want to, uh, thank you for your continued partnership and support. Your collaboration directly helps our neighbors, uh, move from crisis to sustainability. And we're excited to partner, uh, with, uh, the Rochester Hills, uh, city council and, and government, um, on the Giving Tree Program that's coming up, uh, which you are a drop off location as always. Uh, and we can, we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your presentation here and for everything that you do for, you know, Rochester Hills' vulnerable adults. My wife and I actually had the opportunity to tour, uh, the, the food pantry not too long ago. It's really, really an impressive operation that you guys have going there. It's a, it's actually kind of a, it, this, you know, you have this inventory coming in and inventory coming out and you have to control all that. And, and it's really kind of impressive what you guys have done over there. And, you know, when you hear the, the personal stories from the people whose lives have been impacted by the work that you do, it's really truly impressive. So, once again, thank you for everything that you do and it, we're, we're proud to be partners with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and that moves us on to item number, uh, twenty twenty-five dash zero four four two, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, nonprofit service contract, Rochester Area Neighborhood House. We have a motion by Mrs. Mungiole, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer to approve. Uh, I don't see any further discussion on this item. I'll read the resolution. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council approves the fiscal year twenty twenty-six nonprofit service contract between the City of Rochester Hills and Rochester Area Neighborhood House in the amount of ten thousand dollars commencing January first, twenty twenty-six and continuing on, I'm sorry, and concluding on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and further authorizes the mayor to execute a contract on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is item number twenty twenty-five dash zero four three nine, annual report by the Rochester Area Youth Assistance. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Deal, Mayor Barnett and council members. Um, my name is Jennifer Thor and I'm the vice chair of the Rochester Area Youth Assistance. And before I, I speak, I just want to say how proud I am to be a member of this community to see how much you are supporting these nonprofits. It's really, it's really wonderful to see. Um, but getting back to Rochester Area Youth Assistance, uh, we already had a great presentation about Avondale Youth Assistance, so you know what, what it is that we do. And, um, I will move on here. Um, but mainly our, our focus is on financial assistance, counseling and family education. Uh, through financial assistance, uh, you know, we use a, a lot of what you provide to us, uh, to help families who are struggling to, um, pay for skill building, uh, exercises that their children need. Um, for example, piano lessons or, um, to, to be a member of a sport, uh, you know, they're, they're struggling and they want to make sure their children can and be participants and, you know, with their friends. Um, and so that's where most of our financial assistance goes to. We did have an instance where we helped, um, a young student in the Rochester Community School District, uh, who was, um, their caregiver was in the hospital and they were about to be evicted and we, we were able to help them as well. Um, our caseworker, uh, this past year, uh, helped over eighty-four students that were referred to her for, um, issues with drugs, with, um, delinquencies of, you know, truancy and things like that. Um, and, uh, you know, she was able to provide counseling for them and get, get the families the assistance that they need so that their, their children can, um, navigate our system uh, better. And then we provide, uh, find family education services. We provide a lot of workshops at least once a month. Um, during the school year, we provide some, uh, family education workshops like on vaping and, uh, screen time. We did the Screenager thing as well. Um, We did the Screenager thing as well, just so that we make sure that families in our community are aware of current issues that could be impacting their children. This past year, we did have some leadership transitions. As Councilwoman Monjoli mentioned, Lindsay Wood became our chair. She moved up from vice chair. One thing that we're really proud of this year is that we've seen an increase in participation in our youth council. Our youth council, we have representatives from the three high schools in the Rochester Community Schools, and these individuals have really taken it upon themselves to take care of their community. There's the food pantry at the Rochester Police Department, the Fridge. They volunteered, they requested that they be put in charge of restocking it, and that's something that we have committed to, providing funds for them to do so. So they go out and they check it. If it's empty, they go shopping and they fill it. And it's just one of the things that they have done that's been really great. And then one thing we did is, because we've seen an increase in the need for financial assistance in our community, unfortunately, is we've increased our efforts at doing more fundraising and getting grants, and that was pretty successful this year. I want to highlight a partnership that we have with RARA, where, you know, through your help, we provide funding for students in our district to go to Camp Savari for the summer. It's an eight-week camp. Parents can choose to go, enroll their students in the whole eight weeks, or they can do one week, or they can pick and choose what they want to do. On average, we have 19 students who are in there per week, and one thing that we make sure that we provide is transportation. We go to three different areas within Rochester Hills, and we pick students up at the beginning of the day, and we bring them home. And it's a low-cost summer camp for families in our community. We also did a youth recognition. That's one of the highlights of the year. We are very fortunate in our community to have such wonderful young people doing wonderful things. And I just want to highlight, you know, one of the students who was nominated this past year was nominated by a couple teachers at Long Meadow Elementary, and it was because he was kind and empathetic and was helpful to a fellow classmate who had special needs. And just to recognize that that student was just, it was really special. And then a Rochester High School student, Natalie Manke, was awarded our Coats Family Memorial Scholarship for all of her good work. One thing I want to ask and highlight is that we have had some changes in our board, and we have some vacancies, and so we are looking for individuals in the community to join our board. If you are aware of anyone who's interested in working with us and to help provide for families and youth in our community, please, you know, refer them to us. This is our current makeup of our board, and Amy Sullivan is our caseworker, and Mahala Becker is our staff person. And then, you know, if anyone wants to find out more, we're at raya-mi.org, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation this evening. We do have some council comments. We'll start with Mrs. Monjoli.
Thank you, President Deal. Jen, thank you so much for mentioning the membership and the fact that we need, we're looking for more board members, because I serve on the membership committee, and I need to fill some open spots on our board. It is something where it's not, this position is not done through the city, but it's done through the board directly, so they could contact you, or Lindsay Wood, or myself, if they were interested in becoming board members of Raya. The work to be a board member is attend a monthly meeting, and then we ask you to help us volunteer at some of the different events. We were at the Arts and Apples, the Gate Collectors. We also work at the Kris Kringle Market, looking for donations, because we work at the warming tent with the mulled wine. But it's those kinds of dollars that give us extra funding to help with the programming that we do, and I'm very grateful for Jen to step up into the vice president role, because you never know when we might call on her to step into further leadership. But she was also instrumental in helping us rewrite our bylaws last year, so Jen's done a great job, and Raya has been moving forward in the right direction for a couple of years now. I know, President Deal, I can't move the next motion, but I'll let it to my other council members to do so.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank, oh, Mrs. Neubauer.
Thank you, President Deal. I just wanted to say thank you for your organization. A couple months ago, I was pulled into a school, one of the Rochester schools, and I was pulled in in my professional capacity. A mother called me. Her son was, her teenage son was sitting in the office, completely broken, in tears, and he was referred to you guys, and I got to tell you, you all are helping him be the young man he was intended to be, and I'm really thankful for the work. And seeing it firsthand was completely different for me than just hearing about it. I mean, we hear about all the good work you guys do every year, but seeing it firsthand and seeing this young man, you're literally saving his life. And you're being a father and a mother to him, and he's not suffocating anymore, and I'm just really thankful for that, and I just wanted to thank you for it.
Thank you. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Very good. So we'll call that item number 2025-0443, Fiscal Year 2026 Nonprofit Service Contract, Rochester Area Youth Assistance. We have a motion by Mrs. Neubauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland, to approve, and seeing no further discussion on this, I'll read the resolution. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council approves the fiscal year 2026 nonprofit service contract between the City of Rochester Hills and the Rochester Area Youth Assistance in the amount of $29,839.46, commencing on January 1st, 2026, and concluded on December 31st, 2026, and further authorizes the mayor to execute a contract on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We look forward to another year.
Yes.
Let's see, that moves us on to public hearings, and we'll kick this off with 2025-0401, Fiscal Year 2025 Third Quarter Budget Amendment.
Thank you very much, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, members of City Council, Mayor Barnett, and Ms. Jochi? All right. All right, well, it's presented before you tonight are the City of Rochester Hills Fiscal Year 2025 Third Quarter Budget Amendments, and this is the quarterly budget amendment where we present the prior year, or in this case, fiscal year 2024's budgeted to actual lookbacks or true-ups between our funds. And in total, there is a total of $1.4 million proposed to be credited back between various funds citywide. So in total, the third quarter budget amendments presented before you tonight propose to decrease total revenues by $1.39 million, and also to decrease total expenditures by $1.23 million. The net impact on fund balances is a net $160,000 draw from citywide fund balances. So regarding the $1.39 million decrease in total revenues, primarily that is due to the net lookback credits provided citywide. And regarding the $1.231 million decrease in total expenditures, well, $1.3 million of that is operating expenditures, proposed to be reduced due to the net lookback credits. There is a capital project proposed to increase by $270,000, and the most significant item there is the Brewster Road, major road project, which ran into some overruns throughout the year, and that is an increase of $250,000 for that project. And net transfers out are proposed to be reduced by $196,000, and this is really to comply with our city's fund balance policy due to the lookback credits. So with that, I will ask for City Council to open a public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2025 Third Quarter Budget Amendment, and I am available for any public or city council questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder, and we will do just that. We will open this public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 Third Quarter Budget Amendment. I don't see anyone looking to come up to the podium, or I don't have any blue public comment cards indicating that they wish to speak, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move it to, back to the City Council dais for resolution. We have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Ms. Moreland, to approve. I don't see any further discussion on this item. Therefore, be it resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the fiscal year 2025 fund totals as they appear in your packet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And that moves us on to 2025-0400, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2026 Application.
Good evening, President Deal, City Council, Mayor Barnett. I'm here tonight to discuss program year 26 funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the City of Rochester Hills. As part of the application process, communities must hold a public hearing, and the governing body must pass a resolution to approve the planned use of funds. The planning allocation for program year 26 from Oakland County, which passes down funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is $211,500. Administration is recommending the following allocation to the following programs. $15,000 to services for victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault or stalking, which goes to Haven. $16,500 to yard services, which is allocated toward the snow removal program, and the remainder of $180,000 to minor home repair. In highlighting program year 24 funding, which is coming to a close, the $15,000 allocation to Haven went towards assisting 48 individuals from Rochester Hills. Thirty-three minor home repair projects were completed, averaging 3,200 per project. Sixty-four senior residents were assisted with the snow removal services, which during this program year was funded through OLSHA, and will resume being funded by CDBG again in program year 26. At this time, I will request that you open the public hearing.
Thank you very much, and we'll do just that. We'll open the public hearing on the CDBG block grant. Seeing no members of the public approaching the podium, looking like they wish to approach, and I don't think we have any blue public comment cards on this item, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council dais. Mr. Walker?
As a member of the OPC Governing Board?
Yes.
We believe we have to recuse ourselves from this.
That is correct. That is correct.
I recuse myself.
Very good. And I think Mrs. Moreland as well? Very good. All right. But we, at this point, we do have a motion by Mrs. Monjoli, seconded by Vice President Karlock, to approve, and I'll read, I don't see any further discussion on this item, and I'll read the resolution. The Rochester Hill, let me just make sure I read this correctly. There we go. Resolve that the Rochester Hills, City of Rochester Hills, CDBG application is hereby authorized to be submitted to Oakland County for inclusion in Oakland County's annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents, agreements, or contracts which result from this application to Oakland County. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And that moves us on to planning and economic development. Item number 2025-0431, Request for Wetland Use Permit Approval to Impact Approximately 1.26 Acres of Wetlands Associated with the Plans for the City of Rochester Hills to Develop Noiki Park with a Community Center Building, Playground, Dog Park, Walking Paths, Maintenance Building, and Associated Site Improvements on Approximately 34.5 Acres of Land Located at 670 North Adams Road. Parcel numbers, 15-08-151-001, and -002, and 15-008-100-006 through -007, and -008, on the east side of Adams and south of Tinkin, Zoned R1 Family Residential, Steve Sutton, P.E., Noack and Fraus Engineers, on behalf of the City of Rochester Hills applicant. Mrs. Roetger?
Good evening, President Deal, members of council, Mayor Barnett. I'm joined this evening with our applicant, who's been one of our most challenging applicants of the year, I have to say. But we're here obviously with a project that you all know very well, Noiki Park. It was approved, the site plan and the natural features setback, and the tree removal permit at the Planning Commission at its last meeting, but tonight you have the wetland use permit before you, and that is the only element that is up for council approval this evening. You're all familiar with the property, located right at almost the corner of Adams and Tinkin. And tonight, we're here to talk about the wetland impacts. And really, the quick summary of the wetland impacts is that the 30, almost 35-acre park has roughly four acres of regulated, city-regulated wetlands, of which 1.26 are proposed to be impacted. And the key word there, being impacted, not removed. So one of the things as part of the development of this park, the design was very intentional to work with the natural features of the site, as we are innovative by nature, as you all may know. And so the impacts were really, we stayed out of the impacts of any high-quality wetlands, and really, the main impact is the red, as you can imagine, the red danger in the middle, which is really a low-quality wetland that is not continuous with the high-quality wetlands. And we're looking to impact 1.26 acres, truly make improvements to the wetland and make it a very natural-looking wetland pond when we're finished. It's not going to be a manicured, formal pond, but a very natural-looking pond, similar to some of the lovely perspectives that we have received from Noack and Fraus. Obviously, the applicant is here this evening. If you have any additional questions that I can't answer, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. We do have some, oh, you know what? We'll jump to, we'll go ahead and jump right into public comment on these items, and we'll start with Martin Krieger.
Hello. Hello, President Deal. Good to see you, Mayor Barnett, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Teresa. We worked together for years at GM. Good to see you. My name again is Martin Krieger. I'm a longtime resident of Rochester Hills in the Shadowwood subdivision. For 35 years, we've lived on Snowmass Drive. We are one of the half-dozen or so residents on Snowmass that shares a property line with Noackey Park. What I'd like to do here is just share with you some of the concerns and suggestions that we've offered to the Parks Department. There's no issue. I'm not asking for anything. There's no challenges or anything. It's been actually very great to work with the Parks Department. Ken, in particular, I knew I liked him. When he came into his job.
We like him, too.
When he came into his job, and he ripped up all of the previous plans for Noackey Park, because, like I said, we've been there 35 years. When we moved in, there was a farm behind us. It turned into Noackey Park as they obtained that land. And so we've seen it all, and we've seen everything from wanting soccer fields to amphitheaters to pools, and we kept, I kept saying at every planning meeting, this has to remain green space, or it has to be developed to honor the legacy of Noackey, who was a conservationist and a naturalist, you know that. And what Ken and the group has done is right in line with that. I have to just applaud him for what he's done. But what I wanted to share with you is the concerns that we've expressed, and I'm going to run out of time, I'm sorry, but we've asked for an adequate buffer and ground cover to shield the residents, and this is no surprise. There's three basic reasons that we gave for that. One is privacy, obviously. We don't see, want to see a lot of people on the pass in Noackey Park, we're using our decks and outside. That's understood. So we asked for adequate buffer and foliage, trees, tall grasses to shield that. But, and I'll give three reasons. So the first is privacy. These are in escalating importance. The second is, we don't want to deal with people thinking they could park on Snowmass Drive, cutting through our properties to get access to the backside of Noackey. So we asked for the Parks Department to look at ways to mitigate that as even a possibility. We don't want to be dealing with trespassers. It's not anything pleasant to have to deal with, and you can understand that. But the third issue, and I'm going to go a little bit over time, but this is important. This I classify under the, if you see something, say something. So where the paved path comes across.
Okay, I have to, I have to cut you off at this point. Can you wrap it up in one sentence?
I can. There's a pool behind the closest area of the paved trail. We, and it's my neighbor, my next-door neighbor, we have appealed to Ken and to Dennis that all- Dennis that all provisions are put in that design-
Okay.
-that shields that pool.
Okay, so you, and, and you, and you can, please feel free to send an email to council or anything like that, but I have to, I have to abide-
No, they, they know.
Time limit. Thank you.
I sat with Ken in his office-
Thank you very much.
-and Dennis directly in the field, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Thomas Yazbeck?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. President, Council, Mayor. Glad to be here. So I commented at the last meeting pertaining to this at the Planning Commission, so I won't repeat myself too much, but since there's only one person on the dais who is also on the Planning Commission, some novel information maybe. So I am the exact opposite of probably most of the people in the room when it comes to this. I'm actually disappointed that the, the planned improvements of the park are not more intense and exciting and fun, but this is actually a really good plan. So I live about a mile from here, so, you know, there's not really a, a good community gathering space in the northwest quadrant of the city. So the, 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 the community building element is a really, really good feature. And at the Planning Commission meeting, that, you know, the reasons for that were enumerated. So I'm very pleased that. And then, of course, the dog park is an amazing thing. There's not a dog park in Rochester Hills. It's an amazing, amazing thing. Dogs are a bigger part of people's lives, I think, now than they ever have been, so that's a very important thing. I also think that the, you know, the, the trails, I, I believe it's that it seems like some of them at least will be paved or a nicer surface, which is very important because there's people with disabilities or with mobility challenges. This, this just makes the park a more exciting place because, you know, I've been to Nowiki Park, I've explored it, haven't been there in years because there's really not much to do there, and there's not, you know, it's, it, this, this is a great design, I think. You know, the, the parking, it just makes it, people understand that this is a park you can actually go to. And the water feature, of course, the pond will, will be a, you know, I, I almost think, the first time I saw this map, I'm like, is that Innovation Hills? It's, but it's like, you know, it's, I think the, the same elements that make Innovation Hills a cool place also will make Nowiki Hill, Nowacki Park a cool place without, you know, being an exact copy, because again, I think this is, this is something that, you know, the, the northwest sort of quadrant of our city is, is, has no shortage of excellent natural features, but a lot of them are within subdivisions. You know, you don't feel like you're necessarily always welcome at these places, but this is a city property, which means the entire community can enjoy it. So I just want to congratulate everybody that's involved for, for getting this project this far, and I'm wondering why, why these improvements haven't happened sooner, but better late than never, and I really want to, want to be there when it, when it opens up, so excited.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments here this evening. So I just wanted to turn it back to the dais. I don't see any further public comment on this item, but I did want to just go ahead and address Mr. Krieger's items, particularly with respect to, and I think he cited three cons-, three concerns. You know, one I noted was, you know, I think, and what I think what they're looking for is a natural barrier between the neighborhood and the park. You know, I kind of have envisioned like maybe a burm and some natural barriers with trees and things like that. He kind of cited three concerns, private, privacy concerns, one being like trespass with respect to people thinking they could access the park through the, through their houses. And I didn't really, unfortunately, he didn't have a chance to get to his third, but I could conceive of a third being security concerns, that being people in the park being able to look into people's houses and maybe that causing a certain degree of security concern about, you know, potential crime and things like that. So if, if we, do we have anything in our plans to address that?
Um, sure, briefly. And yes, it's a short answer, so we, we have a draft revised plan, as, you know, as, as Mr. Krueger is aware, and it's great that he, he wants to keep this on the record, so that's appreciated. And so we actually have about half of those residents that live around that border that want a burm and the other half don't-
Okay.
...in, in the current plan. So we're, we're looking at revising, and that, the half and half isn't exactly accurate. I think it's two and four, but, but we are, you know, revising plans, and that actually concerns long drainage in that area is, is an area that is expressed. So yes, actually, the things we're putting in place will address security because they will discourage people from walking through the tall grasses and the bunch of trees and the burms that are there on, on that. And, and they will also assist with noise, which was another element that was expressed that I think Mr. Krueger didn't have time to express from the dog park with additional screenings and burms and, and, and vegetation, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I know that the cities work, the city works really hard with residents. I know, for example, the residents where we've built Innovation Hills, the residents who, about that park really seem to enjoy it and kind of like what we've done there, so. Let's see, we do have some council comments. We'll start with Mrs. Newbauer.
Thank you, President Deal. I did get several emails that I just, I did respond to personally, but I just wanted to put it on the record. One of the things that was asked was, have you been consulting with the Nowacki family? And my understanding, based on the comments at the last Planning Commission, is that you guys have been conso-, conso-, talking with members of the Nowacki family, and they're fully supportive of what you're doing. Is that correct?
Oh, that's correct. Actually, Mr. McKay is, is working with them directly, and we've met several times on, on the resident that is in the family, and they have reached out to other siblings in the state of Michigan.
Very good. Another thing that I was, that was addressed at the Planning Commission meeting, but I wanted to restate here, was that someone was concerned, a couple of people were concerned about the number of trees that were being removed, but one of the things that we're really excited about is that you, as the applicant, have decided to replant 465 of those trees rather just pay, than paying into the tree fund, which is a great thing that the applicant is doing rather than just paying into the tree fund. They're actually replacing, I think it's 80-something or 90% of the trees that are being taken out. I can't remember the exact math.
It's pretty close to that, yes.
Yeah. And then one of, somebody else mentioned, you know, that we're taking away green space and whatever it is, but we have 142 acres of green space now in the City of Rochester Hills, and that's grown exponentially just in the last couple of years. So I just wanted to say that the city, this administration, the Parks and Rec staff takes green space and parks very seriously, and they do it well, and this is pretty preserved. If you look at the actual plans, it's, it's, it's not, yeah. Yes, Sarah, can you go to the one that had the picture of the, yes, that one? I mean, it's still very, very, very green, and it's, it's more of some, it's been classified as more of a local community park rather than a, you know, it's more of a neighborhood park than anything else. So really thankful for this development. I think you guys are doing great. There was an open house before the last Planning Commission meeting where more additional comments were made. There's been several outreach opportunities to the community about this. The community has been very vocal and involved in this process. So I would like to move the motion for the approval of the wetland permit. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you for being good neighbors and for talking to all the residents around and listening to their feedback.
All right, very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. Next up, Mrs. Monjioli.
Thank you very much, President Deal. Thank you very much for the, the presentation this evening. As you know, we met at Nowiki Park back on August 8th because I had this real issue about, where's the water on this park? So I was very grateful for Dennis and Matt and Ken to take us on a walk throughout the park, all the way to the back, so we could see where the homes were, to understand the buffer, what kind of buffer zone there was between the park paths and the homes that were nearby. You made me feel a lot better about the water, lack thereof, or what a wetland is. Just because there's no water visible doesn't mean it's not a wetland because of the type of vegetation that's in the area. So I'm very grateful and feel very confident in being able to vote in affirmative for this, this evening, because your team has done such a great job in being able to answer all the questions. I attended the open house where the Shadowwoods residents were here, took copious notes on all the questions, and you and Ken and Dennis answered all those questions, and I'm sure there was a lot of follow-up from there. So thank you very much for that. And Martin, if you're ever looking for someone to work on your PMP renewal, just call me. I live across the street, so. Thank you very much, President Deal.
Very good. Mayor Barnett?
Thank you, President Deal. I have no PMP jokes, so I'll skip right past that. Yeah, and I don't, so I'll leave that. This is exciting, I think, for, for me and for the administration, and we certainly appreciate council's support on this. I think this is what good governance looks like, working together with the residents. Anytime there is proposed change, there's always concern as to what will happen, but I think Ken, you and your team, Sarah and your team have, have worked to build relationships with the neighbors, and, and I think what our residents can expect is another world-class park experience. It will be not exactly the same as Innovation Hills, but it'll be to the same level and quality. Safety will be paramount, so that every user experience is exceptional, and I think that's kind of what our city is known for and is becoming even more known for nationally. It's my goal that we have the best park system, I say, in the galaxy, but sometimes people bring that back down to the region or the state, and I think we're well on our way, and this is another part of that. This is sort of history in the making tonight to see this project move forward in this way. So really proud of our team. Thank you both for your leadership, all three of you really, and those on the council that have supported this in the past. We're going to make you real proud with this, and I think the residents will consider this to be another reason why they love living in Rochester Hills. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Barnett. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. I don't see any further discussion on this. I'll read it into the record. "Resolved that the City Council hereby approves the wetland use permit to permanently impact approximately 1.26 acres of wetland to construct Nowiki Park, including the proposed building and associated overlook area, parking areas, and pathways and associated development infrastructure based on plans received by the Planning Department on September 11th, 2025, with the five findings and four conditions as they are contained in your packet." All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have item number 2025-0433, Request for Final Site Condominium Approval for Auburn Angara Par-, Angara Oaks Condominiums, including nine single-family detached residences, six multi-unit condominium buildings, and related amenities on approximately 9.7 acres of land located at 2469 and 2489 West Auburn Road, 3045 Angara Drive, 3050 Harvey Street. Parcel numbers 15-32-201-001, 002, 003, 004, and 006, located on the south side of West Auburn Road and west of Crooks, Zoned R4, One Family Residential, and a portion of the land has the FB Flex Business Overlay. Bruce Michael, Auburn Angara Oaks LLC applicant. Mrs. Roetger?
Yes, good evening. I'm joined by Bruce and his team. If you want to go do a quick introduction.
Bruce Michael, Three Oaks Communities?
Bill Godfrey, Three Oaks Communities. And Dave Mingle from Rochester Housing Solutions behind me.
Okay. I'll give a quick overview, and then if they have anything they'd like to add, but you may recall, we were here almost exactly one year ago for the preliminary site condominium review for this project, and over the past year, they went back and kind of sharpened the pencils and dug a little deeper in terms of the construction drawings and engineering, and so here we are. Now, this evening for final site condominium and wetland use permit, this did go to Planning Commission at its last meeting, and they did recommend approval of, of both of these, and also approved their natural features and tree removal permits as well. So just a quick reminder, this is about nine acres on the south side of Auburn between Crooks and Adams. And again, they're looking for that condominium plan, that final plan, and a wetlands use permit that was slightly amended from the last time they were here. Just to jog your memory, this is a total of 63 residents. There's nine single-family lots, which include two of those IDD homes. As you may recall, they're currently under construction, also at Walton Oaks for some of those IDD houses. And these are along the southern kind of cul-de-sac here on the drawing on the right side of the screen. There's also five multifamily condominium buildings, which account for a total of 45 units, 19 of which are dedicated to the IDD residents, as well as one five-unit, that's not 15, that should be one five-unit row house as you enter in off of Auburn. And again, that front portion is zoned in our Flex Business District, which does allow for multiple family, for those multiple-family buildings. In addition, they are proposing both a farm stand and a neighborhood gathering space. That's one thing the Planning Commission always looks for, is where are the neighbors going to kind of hang out and socialize in new neighborhoods? And so they have both a kind of neighborhood plaza as well as the farm stand to go along for the places of interest as part of their final condominium. The plan is essentially the same as the preliminary approval, with just some minor tweaks to the cul-de-sac size and some road configuration. And as part of that, actually, let me just jump really quick to that, I'll go back to that in a second, which did result in a increase of 213 square feet to the wetland permit. So again, that is a very minimal increase. As you can see, the total, there's a total of 88,000 square foot wetland, not quite half of which is being impacted, and then Wetland B has 9,000 square feet and just over 400 square feet are impacted. And again, these were both approved as part of the preliminary plan, and the only changes that were there were as a result of some final engineering and fire code requirements for the road design. Just a reminder here are the elevations. Again, you can see the multifamily building at the top, the row houses underneath, and then the single-family homes that's representative of what those nine single-family homes could look like. So again, this is really the final step in the kind of public review process as they go back and finalize those construction drawings and, and move forward with their permits. So if you have any specific questions, I or the team are happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you very much. What we'll do is we'll start things off with a public comment. I have a number of public comment cards on this one. We'll start with Mr. Thomas Yazbeck.
Thank you. I'm back. And I also commented on this item when it was before the Planning Commission, the last Planning Commission meeting. So, Ms. Newbauer, may, maybe, this may be old news for you, but for the others, I'll just repeat myself and add some new takes on this. So I, the, the renderings that I just saw, especially the multifamily building, I mean, it just looks amazing, those balconies. I mean, I, I believe that's, those are the buildings that the handicap people will be reserved, reserved units in, so those look really cool. I'm, I'm just really excited for this development, you know, and I think developments like this and as well as the Nowacki Park, I mean, these just got to be good for property values in our community. These are new, you know, this, this corner of the city off Auburn, you know, there hasn't been a lot of new construction all the time there, so it's a nice addition. And, and of course, the, the, in addition to looking good, I mean, this, I think, is going to be a really good place for people to live. You know, there's, I mean, the fact that these units are being reserved for people that have special needs, I mean, that's just, that's not something you see every day. And, and as I learned at the Planning Commission meeting from, from the folks developing this, I mean, this is not a typical, this is kind of new ground. So I think this is going to be really cool. I really support this. I really hope that this, this gets approved and moves forward and breaks ground and people get to live here. I'm always, always, always in favor of more multifamily housing in Rochester Hills. We need more variety of housing types, and what's great about this development is it has something for everyone. You have some single-family homes for people who want that experience. We have some row homes and then the condos, so it's kind of a, a good mix, and I hope we can sort of replicate this in other places in the city. It's a good, it's a good, good thing, so please approve this. That's all I'll say.
Next up, we have Mr. Nate Rappel.
164,000 pounds, remember that number, okay? On this drawing, Auburn Road, on the bottom is the west side of Angara, at the top is the east. What we have is a 50 mile an hour speed limit. This is a state-owned road. At 50 mile an hour, a vehicle travels 73.33 feet per second. To the west of Angara is a hill on Auburn Road. Auburn Road is a two-lane road. That distance to Angara, as I measured this morning, is 255 feet. At 50 mile an hour, a vehicle travels 3.477 seconds. Now- At 50 mile an hour, a vehicle travels 73.33 feet per second. To the west of Angara is a hill on Auburn Road. Auburn Road is a two-lane road. That distance to Angara, as I measured this morning, is 255 feet. At 50 mile an hour, a vehicle travels 3.477 seconds. Now, Auburn Road is a Class A road. According to the state of Michigan, 164,000 pounds can travel it. 82 tons are the equivalent weight of 41 vehicles, average vehicles. Anybody pulling out on Auburn Road from Angara headed east is exactly 3.47 seconds to go 50 mile an hour. That is cutting it close. This is an accident waiting for happening. The safety and the welfare of the public is really at risk here. That's what I got to say.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Raymond, is it Rowe?
Yeah, I'm still walking with a little bit of... Mr. Mayor and council members, my wife and I have a daughter with autism, and she is one of the people who has a reservation to live in this, one of these units. One of the things that, because of her condition, she's never going to be able to be totally independent. She's going to need a lot of help, a lot of support. You know, I'm an attorney, and I remind all of my clients, the mortality rate is still one per person. And, you know, we all kind of smile in that when we say that. But, you know, that applies to myself and my wife. You know, we're not always going to be here in order to be able to take care of her and watch over her. And that's why a place like this, with all the extra support and everything, is so important. She's going to be an owner. This is going to be her house, her place to live for her lifetime, that it's going to be a secure place for her. And this is why this type of thing is so extremely important. And, you know, yes, you know, we were aware of some of the traffic problems, but I think that something that can get resolved at some point in time and everything. But we're, we are very, very much looking forward to this, because, as I said, our daughter needs a place to live, and she needs a place to live that's her own. With that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, is it Mr. John, is it Nikosia? Sure.
My name is John Nikosia. I have been a resident of Rochester Hills 13 years, 12, 13 years. I have a residence reserved at Auburn Oaks. Very excited to get there. Each resident has unique needs. As a community, having something like this is going to give people like me, and even less fortunate than me physically, the opportunity to have something so important, independence. That's huge. I've been able to succeed in life, I drive, I work, I succeed, but I still live with my folks. So again, living, and I'm 45 years old, it's time that I don't have to do that anymore. I'm excited about that. And this opportunity is going to give me, and like I said, so many others, that opportunity. It's so important. So thank you guys all very much.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Teresa Pounders.
Hi, I'm Teresa Pounders. I have property at 3172 Avondale, right next to this development. I'm going to have the same comments as I did before. It's not about the type of development, but where it's at. I, and my concern is for these families, because having lived next to this for so many years, I've seen the flooding, the swamps, the, I mean, I questioned even at the Planning Commission meeting, like, don't you wonder why nobody else has bought this property or developed it, including the investor that bought it? All the Lombardos, the Poltes, the Randalls, nobody wanted to develop this property. Like my neighbor said, pulling out of this property, which I think one of our Planning Commission members stated that it was the most terrifying part of his day, something along that line of turning out on that property. There is a hill that is basically blind, and though maybe not all of them will be driving, some of them may, like 30% of this is going to be for IDD families, right? So the rest of the development, there will be people pulling out of that drive. I also questioned about it being inclusive, because it appears to me that only if you're wealthy enough to buy your children a second home, can you be a part of this development. And I have nothing against wealth. You know, I, my mom has Alzheimer's disease. I've sold off her property. Thank God that she had the money for me to be able to pay for the care that she deserves, and it's not cheap. And I visited, you know, the assisted livings and other places with all the bells and whistles, and was told about a group home where she has six members in the home and two caregivers. They are angels on earth, and they are amazing. My mom has declines, unfortunately, mentally, but physically is in the best shape of her life. She gets home-cooked meals, they're organic, they treat her like family, and I get the need for this, I totally do. But this is not where you want to put it. My, I guess my other concern is just with all the filling and all that that's been done on the property, have they ever actually been able to do the soil boring tests? Because I have, I have issues with not completing engineering until the end of January, when everything is frozen over, or not doing anything unless it's during a drought, you know? Like, I feel like these people need to know what they're getting into, because if we rip out a bunch of trees and then find out that this is going to be undevelopable, then it's a little bit too late.
Thank you. Next up, we have Justin Taut.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Justin Taut. I'm a board member with Rochester Housing Solutions. My background is in adult special education, so this sits very close to home for me. I have a lot of experience working with young adults as they leave public education and are off into the real world, where I struggled with many families in finding opportunities for my students to have stable housing with meaningful access to their communities and quality of life. RHS's approach addresses these issues, one of the biggest ways is through ownership. They've gone through great lengths to be creative and think of different ways to make sure that, long-term, these, these properties and these homes stay in the community that they were intended for. And they've come up with some really interesting ways to be able to ensure that. One of the great things they've done is created these opportunities for shared living, which helps bridge that gap with the inclusivity and the affordability by bringing multiple families together and giving them opportunities to have their adult children live together and share the costs and create that community within their own home, not just outside of There's also a big focus on creating community within the neighborhood and outside of the neighborhood, whether it's with the other development or just having opportunities and access to bowling alleys, the mall, restaurants, being able to, you know, hopefully provide planning and potentially transportation, to be able to bring people living within the neighborhoods into the community, to be able to have those experiences that most people get to enjoy on a weekly, not daily basis. This project is really something that I think showcases how Rochester Hills is innovative, and I think it's a project that Rochester Hills can absolutely stand behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any additional public comment on this item. I don't see anybody looking to approach the podium, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the council dais. I took some notes on some of the concerns that were outlined during the public comment. Let's start with traffic and traffic safety. I know that we had, it looks like we had our engineering department at least look at it. What can you tell us with respect to the traffic and traffic safety?
Absolutely. So really, the concerns for stormwater and traffic, those were both extensively looked at as part of the preliminary site condominium. I'm sure the applicant can attest, they went through multiple, multiple reviews from our various departments and various agencies. Now, this part of Auburn Road is under the jurisdiction of MDOT, so it had to be reviewed and commented on both by MDOT and by our own internal engineering, traffic, transportation division. You know, obviously, access on that road, we're limited to where the frontage onto Auburn lies, and so the road was placed from a vision standpoint on the safest location that's available to them within their frontage. And as part of this development, they're going to be adding dedicated D cell lanes into the property and a dedicated left-turn lane into the property. So again, trying to isolate the cars from the main through traffic to help improve access in and out of the site. Safety is obviously our number-one concern when it comes to transportation, safety first, and then, you know, congestion second. But safety is always our number-one concern. So that was something that was reviewed by our transportation department and approved as part of the preliminary site plan. Do we go to stormwater or just stick with transportation?
Well, I just have one follow-up question with respect to the, and MDOT approved?
Fully approved at this point, yes.
Okay. Next up, yeah, let's, let's talk about stormwater, because I think one of the other questions that we had that came up was specifically about flooding and engineering of the project.
Right. So this site naturally, from Auburn to the, to the southern end of the site, has about a 25-foot drop. I mean, it's a significant change in topography in the property. So obviously, right now, the property essentially sheet drains from the west, northwest, to the southeast. And so, yes, there's quite a bit of natural flooding as it currently exists. As any development in the city, when it is reviewed by our engineering team, before they can sign off on it, we want to make sure that any stormwater on this site, we are collecting it on our site and discharging it at a rate that is consistent with natural runoff. And so this development, with the detention pond that's included at the southern end, in conjunction with the natural wetlands that are already there, will improve the existing flooding situation that occurs on the site. So yes, it definitely has been a wet year, and there's definitely been standing water throughout this, the spring and summer. But the engineering controls that will be as part of this, between underground piping and then the detention pond that will release water at a rate that would not flood the adjacent properties, will be a significant improvement over what's out there today.
Right. Because is it safe to say that right now, it is an uncontrolled wetland? It is just kind of as it is, there's no engineering that's been done? It's just as you find it, and the water just goes where it goes?
Path of least resistance, right.
But what you're telling me is, is that with the engineering that's been done on this, on this property with respect to this, it is now, it will now be a controlled wetland, where the drainage from the property will be controlled?
Right. In conjunction with a new stormwater pond and underground pipes, and I don't know if you have anything you want to add for the applicants?
Into the existing storm, into the existing stormwater system.
Correct. And will continue off south, southeast of the property as natural drainage course.
In the center of the property, there's actually a low point that's completely contained and doesn't drain anywhere. And that low point extends onto a couple of the properties to the east. And so when the water comes off from the development to the west, there's a stormwater detention basin to the west that drains into that wetland, that water floods there, and it can't get farther south, where the natural drainage course gets lower and heads toward the northern branch of the, of the river, of the Rouge River. So what we're doing is we're developing our grading so that we're not allowing our water to get off-site onto the adjacent neighbors' areas that are real low, because we can't fill their property in. We're capturing all that in stormwater pipes and then putting it into that new stormwater detention basin you see at the southwest corner of the site. It'll be then controlled outlet into the wetland that's to the south of us. So water that now just would sit there and do nothing will capture, put in that detention basin and allow it to extend on its way.
And then rather than, than, rather than draining, as it does naturally, onto the adjoining, you know, neighbor's property, this is going to be controlled to drain, I think it would be south, right?
Correct.
Am I correct? Down into the, all right. Thank you very much. We do have some council members wishing to maybe have some questions on this. Mrs. Newbauer.
Thank you, President Deal. So before our meeting today, and I think it was after one of the Planning Commission meetings, somebody had written to me from the community asking about the water retention, and I had gotten some answers that I provided to Clerk Scott to pass on to everybody in council. So could you, could we incorporate that into our meetings, please?
Yes.
One of the things, a couple of the things that talked about was the grading, and one of the things that you had stated is that you're actually going to be raising eight to, six to eight feet above the existing grade in the area, which should help resolve some of the water issues. Also, you had mentioned the detention and structure pipes being added, detention basin being added, the groundwater being collected, off-site water management, and that engineering, your engineers, along with the city engineers, have designed a robust stormwater management system in order to resolve issues that were in existence. So I just wanted to make sure that I summarized that, put it on the record, and it could be incorporated. Otherwise, based on, this was a re-presentation, this is something that's already been fundamentally approved. We do have another, for history, for some of the people who are not here, I was, the first time this came to us, it was the Walton Oaks, and I was not resistant, but I was stressed because I wanted to make sure that the vulnerable people, vulnerable people who this was intended to protect were actually being protected. And the applicants went back and hired counsel and ensured that the people who this was meant to protect were actually being protected. You could tell from the earlier presentations from Neighborhood House, Raya, Avondale Youth Assistance, that Rochester Hills is really good at loving people and including everybody. And this is an amazing second time we're having this in Rochester Hills, which makes us better than Celine, because I think they only have one development. So, and as I stated in planning and in previous meetings, this touches my family personally. None of them are fortunate enough to get into this development, but I'm hopeful that they would have a chance for this kind of element in the future. You know, it's, it's exciting, and I'm proud that Rochester Hills was chosen and that Rochester Hills Planning and Economic Development Department worked so hard to make this happen and work. And for Mr. Yazbeck, I don't think we've ever agreed on anything more than once, and to have us agree twice in one day is kind of a record for me and you, so gold star. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Blair. Mrs. Monjioli.
Thank you, President Deal. Like Mrs. Newbauer, I also had sent some questions off to Ms. Rodiger, so, President Deal, can we incorporate those into the answers?
Absolutely.
All right. So, yes, it was almost a year, because I went back to my questions from last year, which was November 11th, to make sure I wasn't asking you the same questions this year, and that I was at least consistent in my concerns from last year to this year. But on the stormwater, which I know is actually the next agenda topic is the wetlands piece, who is liable for the stormwater plan if it does not work? Is it the city, because we permitted the plans, or is it the developer, because they came up with the plans? But stormwater in our community has been an increasing issue, and one that the legislation and landscaping has failed to address. But there are homeowners associations that are reaching out for clarification on ownership of those plans. So who is liable for this stormwater plan?
Right. So the detention pond, all that would be a private facilities part, that would be under the responsibility of the HOA.
So if the, the neighbors, years down the road, ended up being flooded because this stormwater plan is, makes things worse than better, they could sue Angara Oaks as opposed to suing the city?
I would defer to our city attorney on that, on these legal matters, but I would assume, yes.
Through, through the chair, there would be a required stormwater maintenance agreement with the owner or developer responsible for those improvements.
Isn't that what we're doing in the next agenda topic, wetlands permit? But this is a stormwater plan that's part of the development that we're giving final approval for tonight. So if we give final approval for this tonight, is there some agreement between Auburn Angara Oaks and Rochester Hills relative to the stormwater plan? And I'm just asking, when Mr. Crist has to go to court, who, who is his partner? Is it us on our own, or is it with the developers?
It will be the developer's responsibility.
It's the developer's responsibility?
Correct.
Okay. So I do want to make sure that that is in the minutes, Clerk Scott, that we have clarity on whose liability it is for this stormwater retention plan that's part of the final condominium approval that will go through tonight. Okay, cool. Thank you for that clarification. After all the After all the other questions that I had, of course, it did prompt some more. So do we have something in our zoning, not in our zoning, but in our ordinances or planning that identifies what is an IDD home? Is it one with a big island and barrier-free access, or?
We do not, no. So originally, when this development was proposed, that was kind of some of the initial kind of questions as this kind of like a new, you know, type of, of housing. But really, it came down to the definition of family and how houses are defined between single-family and multiple-family. So because of the common areas that are defined within each unit, they're defined as single-family from our standpoint. So the IDD is really just a single-family home.
So it, they don't have to have any barrier considerations or open floor plans or anything like that? So any other developer could come to the city of Rochester Hills and say, I want to designate a home or a structure in their subdivision as an IDD home, or just a home that is more compliant to an IDD resident. It doesn't have to be in this development, per se.
Yeah, I mean, that's theoretically, yes. There's all types of families. And so if in your home, you wanted to identify that you would have a space for someone else, another, another family member, or someone, a friend, or acquaintance who would rent a room, that kind of their, their differentiation is that they have an ownership instead of a renting.
Okay.
But from a structure standpoint, it's a single-family house.
Okay. Because it does bring up, in my questions, I'd asked about the grants that are covered to finance this, and one of the responses that came back from the developer was that you were going to have onsite support staff. Where are they going to be staying?
The Oakland County Housing Trust Fund agreed to provide $250,000 for a condominium unit that will be occupied by a community coordinator. It's, the position's called community coordinator, and they do daily check-ins, they help manage the direct caregiving services. They really are focused on community integration, and they will be living, we haven't decided which building it will be in, but Rochester Housing Solutions is going to own the unit, and though, they will be managing that community coordinator.
Okay. So they get a unit less than market value of the structure? Because I'm looking at your website and the townhouses?
No, Rochester Housing Solutions still has to buy it for the price.
For the full price?
Yeah, the county's just in for $250.
Okay.
That's all they were willing to do.
Cool. Thank you very much. I just wanted to understand that.
Sure.
And so it's one person living in that structure that would be then servicing all of the IDD families or individuals onsite?
It's one person living in that condominium coordinating the activities for all the residents. I think the plan is to actually bring in additional support for that person, so they aren't just managing those activities by themselves.
Okay. So the housing organization owns the unit, and then they're just having different staff come in and out of that unit?
No, there's a person who's living there with a lease, a 12-month lease.
Okay.
And, and they, their task, it's a part-time job, not a full-time job. Approximately 20 hours a week at first, and then they will be supported by other staff from Rochester Housing Solutions if they decide it's needed. And I know that the families are also working with the care providers to see if there is additional support beyond the direct care that the agency provides, to see if they have people that could provide similar services. But it's really important to have one person onsite. The reason we went to the county to ask for the support is because we think a long-term support staff onsite helps build that relationship, build the, build the relationships, the sense of community and the integration with the neurotypical neighbors. It's just great to have somebody onsite versus not onsite. So that's why we requested the money from the county, and they agreed and are now providing some, but not all of the money to purchase that unit. RHS will own it, they'll rent it to a community coordinator, 12-month lease.
That doesn't cover the direct caregivers. They come and go. You know, they're stationed onsite for their period of time that they work, and then they, then they leave, as opposed to living onsite.
Okay. At some point, Ms. Rotiger, I need to understand more about what defines a group home versus staff that's living onsite in a, a unit that's for rent to them.
Right. This would be no different than having like a nurse come in and care for an elderly parent or something, that would come in and, and do whatever you hired them to do to help them with any accommodations they may need.
All right, great. It's interesting that this should come tonight because Nowicki Park used to be known as Adam's Apple, and there was a farm stand out in front. And the city and the, the original owner of that property, for a very long time, were tied into a legal battle over not whether or not Adam's Apple could have food that they brought in from other places to sell at that food stand. It's come so long that when I asked the question about, does they, do they have to grow the food onsite to have it at the farm stand, you've come back and told me, no, we can bring it in from other locations to make that happen. So it's interesting to see how our zoning and our ordinances have changed over 30-some years to make this possible, to have that farm stand onsite.
Yeah. And that's only possible because that front portion is part of the flex business, which does allow for retail.
Okay. Cool. One last question. The, I had asked about the IDD homes and whether they could change, but what if 10 years from now, there's no buyer for an IDD home?
If there's no buyer for the home, there are all kinds of options. One is that RHS could come, step in and buy, purchase the home and rent it to an IDD adult. So that's one option. The owner, if they can't sell it, they have to rent it to an IDD adult, so that's another option of, you know, to help defray the carry if they, if they can't sell it right away. So I think those are probably the two most likely scenarios. The other scenario is that the other families on that floor join together and say, you know, it's really important that we own this unit, and then we can lease it to an, rent it to one of our kids' friends or something like that.
Okay, great. So just more of a comment than a question is, as I mentioned at the very beginning, Rara is having their event, their comedy night. It's the benefit, the proceeds from that are benefiting our SCAMP camps. We do service our special needs community up to 26 and beyond, and we actually had a mother come into one of our Rara board meetings recently, being very grateful to Rara providing programming for their 20-something-year-old child that was able to come into the Rara building and spend time there to be involved in programming, and called out our staff specifically for the work that they do to help the students, the adults in our community. So I hope that as you have residents take place or come, move into Walton Oaks and Auburn Angara Oaks, that you let them know the services that Rara has to offer for our special needs community, and that they are able to participate in so many different events that we have scheduled. And I hope we get to see parents or any of the future residents of Angara Oaks or Walton Oaks come to the Rara event at Rochester Mills to help benefit our students or, and our families that need that help. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for the invitation. Just for the record, Rara is outstanding. Wendy is a fabulous partner. My son Logan goes to lots of the different Rara events, as do the kids of many of the family members here. So very well done, Rochester Hills. It's a big, big draw for, for families like ours that need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did want to follow up on some of Mrs. Munzioli's questions because it left me with a couple, with, the answers left me with just a couple of questions. So number, initially, some of her comments were about the liability with respect, specifically with respect to, should any of this, should any of the stormwater impact the neighboring or adjoining properties? Now, as I understand it, once the project is complete, there will be a stormwater maintenance agreement that will be entered into between the city and the, and the, and the development that will govern, in particular, you know, that, that, the, the association, you know, will be responsible for maintaining the, the stormwater system. But that, as I understand it, is for maintenance. That does not necessarily cover the liability. And so, you know, what I am kind of wanting to get back to was her original question, which is if we take action tonight, we approve the project, and I know that this is probably more properly under the wetlands issue, but I think we've kind of gone past that. So I want to, I just want to get some clarification, and forgive me for not remembering, it's been over 25 years since I've taken property law, but should they cause, like, is the city essentially held harmless, and this is a, this is a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, and the city is essentially held harmless? Our engineering is not like a sign-off that we become somehow liable for our engineers if they, if this doesn't work out the way they think? I direct this question to our city attorney.
Through the chair, there would be a strong argument of governmental immunity as a governmental function.
Okay. Okay. So this would really be between the neighbors. All right, very good. And then my next question would be another, following up on another one of Mrs. Munzioli's questions, and that is with respect to, she asked, what, what would happen someday if this community did not want, you know, for whatever reason, there's no market, or for whatever reason, they changed their mind and they don't want to rent to IDDs anymore? Now, there's two ways that you can build in, you know, the, the restriction, right? You can put it in the deed as a deed restriction, which would restrict it for all time, or you could put it in the bylaws of your master plan or your master, you know, you know, which is amendable by however the plan or however the, the document allows for the amendment. So my question is, is, is it amendable to where the, they, you know, if they wanted to turn these into regular multifamily apartments, could they do, could, could a majority vote or a certain vote of the, of the owners and co-owners of this condominium complex change the nature and character of the community?
No. What we did is we did a separate declaration, specifically putting that outside of the bylaws so that the neurotypical members of the association couldn't, in essence, overpower the IDD members of the association, therefore say, we don't want them here anymore and, and turn it into something else. So there's a separate declaration, same in Walton Oaks, to make sure that it's only IDD can only live there. And by the way, the IDD is a Medicaid term, it's a legal term.
Right.
It requires a doctor's, you know, certification.
And you guys are using that term.
That's correct.
Adopting that into your agreement.
Correct. That's exactly right.
So let me ask you then, maybe then to just get to a more pointed question, and that is, if it were a combined vote of the neurotypical and the representatives of the IDD, could they change the nature and character of this community to service?
No, that declaration is separate.
And it, and it is, and it is forever binding and travels with the land.
Correct.
Just like a deed restriction.
Exactly right.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have any further, I don't have any further questions. So that brings it back. I don't see any further comments or discussions on this item. We do have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Blair, and I will go ahead and read that resolution into the record. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby recommends approval of the final site condominium plan for Auburn Angara Oaks condominiums based on the plans received by the planning department on August 20th, 2025, with the six findings and four conditions as they appear in your packet. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And now we can move on to the second piece of this. 2025-0434, request for modified wetland use permit approval to impact approximately 39,625 square feet of wetlands for the Auburn Angara Oaks condominium development. Previously approved wetland use permit allowed an impact of 39,404 square feet, a proposed development with nine single-family detached residences, six multifamily unit condominium buildings and related amenities, on approximately 9.7 acres of land located at 2469 and 2489 West Auburn Road, 3045 Angara Drive, 3050 Harvey Street. Parcel numbers, 15-32-201-001-002-003-004 and -006, located on the south side of West Auburn and west of Crooks Road, Zoned R41 Family Residential, and a portion of the land has the flex business overlay, Bruce Michael Auburn Angara Oaks LLC applicant. Ms. Rotiger, I think you covered most of this in your original presentation, but if you have anything you want to supplement, you may, but if you, if you wished, there you go. If you wish to stand on that, you may.
Yeah.
And we do have one public comment on this item, and it is from Teresa Pounders.
Sorry, three minutes is super short, so I'm trying to cover that. Okay, I got a question about the sewers. You guys are aware that the sewer's not going, coming from the road. It's actually going out the back of the property, sort of 100 feet, where it elbows out over to Devondale Road through an easement, easement on Devondale. Well, I understand it's not through the wetlands now, but it's still through the natural features area. So this is, this is not, sewer's coming in from the street, and the water can, but because poop doesn't flow uphill, and they don't like to use pumps because pumps fail, and then we have a mess. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear that this wet, these sewers are going through the back of the property, through part of the wet area, elbowing out and going to Devondale Road, and who's responsible for that? Because when they were trying to get me to allow an easement through my property for the sewer pipe, I was like, no, because if something should go wrong, which I think it did at Maple Hill, if something were to go wrong, I would literally have people's crap floating through my property. And he said the city would be responsible for it. And I said, well, I don't want an easement through my property right now. I have no wetlands on my property right now. So if I should decide to build on my property, I wouldn't be able to because there's an easement. He told me I should. I would be able to. The thing about it is, I've done a little bit of real estate investing myself, not on the scale that others have, mainly just some little starter home area, homes in Shelby Township, right by Brooklyn area, Auburn and Quinder, but one in Troy, that there was an easement through it, and it sat on a double lot. And I, I knew when I bought it, I wasn't going to be able to build it up, but it did sit on a double lot. So I guess I want to know who's going to be responsible for the sewer going through the back of the property and going out that far to the road? My other question was too, because it has to drop down so far, this was a question I asked, planning, because it has to drop down so far, and there's several hundred feet going all the way back, are they going to reach the sewer? And he said, well, it should because it appears to be 10 feet underground, but if not, there's always a pump. And I'm like, well, I thought pumps weren't, you know, wanted because pumps fail. So my neighbor, who was really close to, the other neighbor that allowed the easement, put it closer to my other neighbor's house, who has towering, towering trees, and is worried that, like, what if something happens? Like, she was told to take pictures. But it's like, the thing about it is, and I love you, Teresa Munzioli, and Mr. Walker, thank you for your comments the last time about this development concerning you as well. But I guess I want to know, like, who's, who's responsible there?
Thank you very much. I don't see any other public comment on this item. I don't see anybody looking to approach the podium, so we'll go ahead and we'll close public comment. And trying to summarize the, I think it, her question relates to the sewage. I'm not sure how that impacts the, the wetland request that's here, but if you can address the sewage and, and I guess that just connects into city sewers, I would assume, right?
So the, the question she's asking about is the sanitary sewer, not the storm sewer.
Right.
And we're connecting to the existing storm sewer on, on Devon Dale. There's, yes, I said sanitary.
Yeah, you said storm. Yeah, you meant sanitary sewer on Devon.
We are connecting to the sanitary sewer on Devon.
Correct.
Sorry. Too many S's. And what, and what's being done is, is that sanitary sewer pipe will be directional drills underground instead of an open-cut trench through that area, so the trees that were, would be going. So the trees that were, would be going under, we wouldn't be destroying, as you would if we had an open, open cut. It'll be built under basically the observance of the city inspector, just like we have at Walton. They'll watch that all go in. Our engineers will be on-site and verify that it's gone in where it's supposed to, and they're as-built. And when that's complete and your engineering people have accepted it, it'll become a city property, as all of your sanitary sewer mains do in the city. So it'll be under your care, once, once we complete the, the work and have given you adequate, you were able to determine that it was done adequately and correctly.
Right, and, and so, right, they'll, they'll, the, the city, the city departments will approve, will approve the, the work after it's done. Anything, I'm trying, and I didn't quite, there's something about elevation and, and running uphill or downhill, I'm trying, but I think it's, as it sounds, you're going to be, you're going to be running far enough underground to where land elevation up top isn't going to make a big difference, right?
No, there's, there'll be, there'll be no issues. It's, this has already been fully engineered. It's already been approved by your engineering department, has actually been sent on into the sanitary sewer permit process. It's your permit, so you have, you have to make the application to the state, and it's presently at the WRC right now, because it has to go through them and then up to the state, and then I think back down through Great Lakes Water, if I remember correctly.
And, and putting it into layman's terms, you know, regardless of the elevation up top, this is, as you, you kind of indicated, this is deep enough underground to where it's not interfering with trees or tree roots and tree systems and things like that.
And it's properly sloped, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, at that depth, the, the above elevations don't, aren't as, aren't relevant.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll bring it back to the dice. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. I don't see any further discussion on this item, so I will go ahead and read the resolution. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the amended wetland use permit for Auburn Angara Oaks Condominiums to permanently impact 39,625 square feet of wetlands, both wetland A and wetland B, to construct the private road building areas for multiple-family and single-family units and associated development infrastructure based on the plans received by the Planning Department on August 20th, 2025, with the three findings and/or conditions as they appear in your packet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also passes unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Next up, item number 2025-0453, request for approval of, for, for the execution of the revitalization and place-making RAP grant award and agreement, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, Lansing, Michigan. Ms. Rodiger.
Good evening, this one's really easy for you. The state wants to give us money, $750,000 roughly. About a year ago, Ken and I started working together on a grant application, which we were so graciously awarded, was back in the spring, I think. He was actually designing it while we were waiting to hear word back if we received the grant. And now that we're actively, actively out there constructing Brooklyn's Plaza, it's time for us to collect on our, our funds from the state. So this is just to authorize the execution of the paperwork and allow the mayor to say yes.
I do like money. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Mungiole. Resolved, I don't see any further discussion or public comment on this item. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes approval for the execution of the revitalization and place-making RAP grant award and agreement from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, in the amount of $756,695, and to provide the necessary matching funds and further authorizes the mayor to execute all final grant documents and necessary agreements required to accept the award and complete the grant process. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Public comment for items not on the agenda, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment on any item that does not appear on our agenda. We did receive one blue public comment card, and it's from Mr. Thomas Yazbeck.
Thank you once again for allowing me to speak. This is definitely not related to the other items. So this is just kind of out of the blue. So I'm not sure, maybe it was last year, but I saw there was a petition going around that some students at Rochester High School had made, and I'm not sure if it reached any of the council members, but what it pertains to is, there was a strong desire, and I don't have anything to do with this, but I, I thought, you know, this didn't go anywhere, and I, and I wanted to sort of bring it again to your attention. You know, so basically, the request was, can we get a crosswalk on Livernoy, kind of between Rochester High and the sort of shopping center across the street? You know, as you, as you may be aware, there's obviously crosswalks at the intersection of Livernoy-Walton, and then there's crosswalks, I believe, at Livernoy and Harding, maybe? Whatever that street is, that's kind of in-between halfway. So I just think, you know, I just want to sort of give a plus-one to that idea and, and say, can we pursue that? Because I think we need a lot more of what are called mid-block crossings in our city, which are kind of crosswalks that aren't just, you know, at the intersection of major mile roads, but might be, you know, at every, every quarter mile or even, you know, sort of smaller increments like that. There's a lot of people in our community that walk. It's not just a recreation thing, especially, especially with students, they're actually trying to get to places. And I, I think we all want to avoid incidents where people get hit by cars, or they're jaywalking, or, or whatever it is. And so I think that, that's something that city council should explore, that location in particular. I mean, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Adams Road crosswalk. I like to think I had a little part to play in getting that forward, but, you know, that was, that's an amazing project, and, and we can do interesting things with crosswalks. We can have signals that make it easier. Obviously, Innovation Hills has some new crosswalk signals with the, with a flashing beacon. You know, there's different options we can look at, and, and what works for, you know, Livernoy, we don't know. Maybe that's something we got to figure out, but I, I think that's something to look at. There are other locations in the city as well, where, where those kinds of things could, could, could be done, but I kind of wanted to draw attention to that one specifically, because, you know, the last thing we want is some, is an incident where, you know, a student at the high school is injured or worse. So I just, and, and again, there are other people as well, there's people that live around there that want to get back and forth. Just asking you guys if you can explore that, if we can, if we can do something about that, so, thank you.
All right, I don't see any other members of the public looking to approach the podium, and I don't have any other additional blue public comment cards, so we'll go ahead and close public comment for items not on the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and without discussion. If any resident or council member requests separate discussion of any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion. I've not been made aware of any requests to remove any item from the consent agenda. We have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously, and that moves us on to legislative and administrative comments. Do we have any legislative or administrative comments this evening? Oh, let's kick things off with Clerk Scott.
Thank you, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, City Council, and Mayor Barnett. I just want to remind everyone, we have an election coming up. It is Tuesday, November 4th, and we have gone from 32 precincts down to 21 precincts. Anyone affected by these changes has been sent a new voter information card. Also, early voting begins this Saturday, and that's at our Rochester Hills Public Library. The hours there are 8:30 to 4:30. Thursday is 12 to 8, but that is open from Saturday, October 25th, through Sunday, November 2nd. So we hope to see you there or at your precinct on Election Day.
Thank you very much, Clerk Scott. And for those of you who are watching this, in addition, in addition to questioning your Monday night television viewing, anybody who wants to know the score of the Detroit Lions Monday Night Football game is Lions 21, Tampa Bay 9. And with that, I'll send it over to Mayor Barnett.
I'm not watching it on my phone right now. Thank you, President Deal, Council. Real quick, I'll, I appear to be the only Lions fan in the room, since I'm, feel like, feel like we should be moving a little quicker on some of this stuff, but we'll see. I'll give this report really quick. A lot of great things happening in the city, probably some of these will come up more in the future. I want to recognize the Fire Department for putting together a really great open house, celebrating their 50th year, which was pretty cool. A lot of the retirees came back to celebrate. We appreciate the great work that they do and recognize the wonderful event. I'm going to actually have this group come up sometime in the future, probably led by Pam Valenteck. The Rise Cup, this is at Whiskey Rays last week. We took over the entire place for a trivia night. Really cool work, great engagement, like I've never seen before with our business community, including, we announced today the winners. If you haven't seen Innovation Forest, up and down the Clinton River Trail, this is pretty cool. Our first-place winner was One Monroe, second place was Solve IT, and third place, A. Raymond. Really, really cool artistic expressions of their innovative by nature, and really proud of those. You can see those on the Clinton River Trail, I think there's 22 in place down through the trail. Our Parks Team, not to be outdone, has put on a couple major events, including the Stonewall Pumpkin Festival last weekend, or week, week and a half ago, really great event, huge turnout. And some of you were at this event, an unexpected huge turnout, over 2,000 people showed up for the first trail of treats. This is a drone shot of the people that came for our first-ever kind of trick-or-treat event. We actually met today to kind of talk about what worked really great and what we need to improve upon, so we'll certainly have this event in the future with some improvements, but wildly successful. I know I was there with a couple of council members, thank you for being there and for your support of this. Our Parks Team continues to do an exceptional job of putting and hosting events. You see a couple more pictures. And the one thing, cool thing about this event was, it wasn't our idea, it was hers. McKenna Llewellyn, a part-time team member, she came up with this idea, pitched it to her team, and we went with it, and it turned out to be a huge success. We gave her the world championship belt that we recognize once a month for our Parks Team Member of the Month, and she was there with her family, and it was really kind of a fun, fun time to be with, with her and recognize a team member whose idea came to fruition. A couple leadership moments here. This is our own internal leadership group that goes through, meeting with every department, learning a little bit. This was their graduation ceremony last week. And then last week, we also hosted the Greater Rochester Leadership Group that came through, leaders from across the three communities, Rochester, Rochester Hills, and Oakland Township. And of course, can't talk about leaders without talking about the Lions. They are leading, as you mentioned, 21 to 9. We hosted a tailgate today out in front for a lunch hour for our team members. We had cornhole and free food, and one of our team members even wrote a song about the Detroit Lions, which we'll have to play at an upcoming meeting. It was a smash hit. So lots of things going on. It is still 21 to 9, and I hope to see the fourth quarter.
Here's hoping, but Councilman Blair.
All right, we're going to go real fast. Let's try again with our screen, Christine, let's see what happens. Hey, it worked, all right, cool. So I just want to give a quick shout-out to our Parks Department. We hosted a middle school cross-country meet, and the Parks Department did an amazing job making sure that the whole place was ready, it was clean, the path was marked. This is one of four heats, right? This is just one group of four, right? There must have been at least 2,000 people there, and hats off to a job well done. So appreciate that, Parks Department, and back to you, President Deal.
Thank you very much. I think that will conclude the legislative and administrative comments, but we do have one item under the attorney's report, correct?
Yes, thank you, President Deal, members of council, Mayor Barnett. You've been provided a proposed interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Rochester Hills with respect to proposed park maintenance and operation for an area adjacent to Bloomer Park. Oakland County, I've advised you, has already approved that proposed agreement. The draft dated October 6th of 2025. This particular item is not on the agenda. However, if council wishes to move forward with consideration of this proposed interlocal agreement, a proposed resolution to approve the interlocal agreement and to authorize the mayor to execute that agreement could be entertained.
And as I understand it, the proposed resolution would read as follows. Resolved to, Rochester Hills City Council resolves to approve the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Rochester Hills for park operations and management. Final version 10/6/25, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Do we have any discussion on this item? Mr. Walker? Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. And I'll read it again, since I probably have to. I'm looking over at Clerk Scott, I have to. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council approves the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Rochester Hills for park operations and management. Final version, October 6th, 2025, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion and no public comment on this item, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion is passed unanimously. Any other attorneys?
Nothing further, thank you.
Nothing further, thank you. Next up, new business, and we will start on item number 2025-0421, request for purchase authorization, HR contract blanket purchase order for benefit broker and consulting services in the amount not to exceed $137,000 through September 30th, 2027. Manquen Vance, Troy, Michigan?
Manquen Vance, yes. Okay, I will keep it brief, going with the theme. So good evening, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, members of council, and Mayor Barnett. So Manquen Vance was originally awarded a three-year contract in August of 2022 to perform benefit broker and consulting services. We have been satisfied with their services and would like to request authorization to continue under the original terms with granting a two-year extension in the amount not to exceed $137,000 with an expiration date of September 30th of 2027. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good, we have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Mr. Blair. I don't see any further discussion or public comment on this item, so I'll read the resolution. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a contract blanket purchase order for benefit broker and consulting services to Manquen.
Manquen Vance.
Manquen Vance, Troy, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $137,000 through September 30th, 2027, and further authorizes the procurement manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item number 2025-0454, request for purchase authorization, MIS, purchase authorization of hardware, software, and support for an HPE Network server storage solution in the amount of $349,314, with a 10% project contingency amount of $34,961.40 for a total not to exceed project cost of $384,275.40 to IT Solution Group, Novi, Michigan. I don't know what an HPE Network storage server is, but I know Mr. Blair does, but Ms. Lyons, if you could enlighten us.
Yes, good evening, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, city council members, and Mayor Barnett. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of this purchase for an upgrade to our network storage solution. We purchased the existing hardware back in 2018, and it is now approaching eight years old. It's coming to the end of its useful life. We've, we have used it up, we have done everything we could do with it, and it's begun, began to experience some component failures. This system is the backbone of our city IT infrastructure. We looked at all our options for this planned replacement, we partnered with the purchasing department to look at our options, and they said we could go with the Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract, which is pre-negotiated, competitive pricing satisfies our purchasing department's competitive requirements. Our current network solutions provider, IT Solutions Group, is an authorized distributor under the Omnia Partners Agreement, and as a part of our existing network services contract with ITSG, they will provide the installation at no charge. And additionally, we have received notification that we can receive a substantial discount through HPE, which they're, with their typical year-end pricing, if you get it in at their fiscal year-end. This request is in our 2025 budget, and it allows us to purchase the equipment, avoid some additional possibility of inflation, and eliminate installation costs. So, and this is also a core priority of our IT strategic plan, to replace things before they break. So I'm requesting your approval tonight to move ahead with this purchase, and I thank you for your support. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lyons. Miss, I should have known, Mr. Blair.
I'm not going to hassle you at all, Rochelle, but Simplivity is the dumbest name for a product. We couldn't go with the Dell Power Vault? It sounds so much cooler.
product. We couldn't go with the Dell Power Vault? It sounds so much cooler. Have fun with your storage. We appreciate you bringing this to us. President Deal, I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mrs. Bungioli. Speaking of that, Mrs. Bungioli.
Thank you very much. It's more, this is not a cloud computing. We're not going to have to worry about Amazon Web Services going down and having us be out of business for any period of time, right?
That is correct. This is an on-prem solution.
Yay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep it on-prem forever. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
High fives all around. We have a motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mrs. Bungioli. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of hardware, software, and support for an HPE Network Service Storage Solution to IT Solutions Group, Novi, Michigan, in the amount of $349,314 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $34,961.40 for a total not to exceed project cost of $384,275.40. It is further resolved that the city's acceptance of the proposal and approval of the award of a contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the party's entry into an execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, 2025-0447, request for purchase authorization, Oakland County Sheriff's Office, purchase authorization for one drone as a first responder, DFR unit, and DJI Dock 3, in the amount not to exceed $26,412, and authorization for payment of annual costs, including software maintenance and licensing fees, in the amount not to exceed $3,500. Drone Nerds, Miami, Florida, Oakland County, Pontiac, Michigan.
I don't come up with the vendors. Council President, City Council, Mayor, I'm here to seek approval for the City Council to purchase a drone to support the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Drone as a First Responder Program. The program provides valuable platforms to support public safety, including responding to active 911 calls, locating missing persons, and assisting with high-risk incidents. It can also document crime scenes and accidents. Other communities, like Waterford, Taylor, Warren, and Oran Township, are currently in the process or already adopting this technology. All the DFR missions are going to be managed by trained Oakland County Sheriff's Office personnel and are strictly governed by FAA regulations. Pending any questions?
Thank you very much. And as I understand it, this is only for the purchase of the drone. The operation of the drone is taken on by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Mrs. Newbauer?
Thank you. I just wanted to move this into, for approval, but I did want to say that I didn't have, I did have an opportunity to speak to several of your officers about this during my day job, and they were saying how this is going to improve their safety as well as the public's safety, so.
It's a great asset.
Yeah, so, fully support.
Very good. And you moved for it?
Yep, I moved for it, yep.
All right, and seconded by Mrs. Moreland. Mr. Blair, I skipped past you.
That sounds good. Captain Workman, I toured the drone facility with Councilwoman Moreland, it was a couple of years ago, and was blown away, and I'm glad to see the cost has come down. This drone will be property of the City of Rochester Hills, correct?
It will be.
Now, I was reading through some of the restrictions that were placed on its use, and it goes through a variety of scenarios, which makes sense, search and rescue, and crowd control, and so forth. But let's say DPS wanted to maybe do a weekly flyover Brewster, just to see how the construction's going. Are we precluded from using the drone for any other purpose?
Well, it's your property. I think there's going to have to be a memo of understanding as to how it's going to be used. Obviously, from our standpoint, we won't do anything unless it's tied to an incident number or a crime classification. We want to make sure that we protect the constitutionality of the residents here. I think if we can get with the drone unit specifically and ask them that question, it's going to depend on the license, too, that we're using as far as what the FAA has approved us to do with line of sight and things like that. So, I think that's something that we would have to address off-site and determine exactly how the city wants to use that, and then who would operate it at that point.
Yeah, the, if you could compile that, or at least give those answers, that'd be great. One of the things that we walked away from that tour was just thinking how literally every department in the city could somehow use a drone. Now, obviously, I don't want to pull it away from, you know, the need in an emergency, but knowing what it's capable of, in case we wanted to buy another one, for instance, would be very helpful. So, thank you very much, and I move to approve.
Mrs. Newbauer?
Third, or whatever. Let's get out of here.
Very good. And now, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, President Deal. Captain, sounds like a great idea, no question about it. I talked to Mr. Snyder a little bit about this last week, and we talked about the capital outlay to buy the drone, and it looks like there's a bit of $3,500 a year in maintenance. But my question is, is who's monitoring it? Who's flying it? How is that being handled for this drone?
So, the $3,500 is for the licensing and the software? It's not the maintenance if something should happen to the drones? I just wanted to clarify that. That's for the licensing, software?
Software maintenance?
Correct.
And licensing?
Right.
Okay.
As far as who's flying it, our drone unit specifically will have the capability to fly that. They'll be able to fly it from downtown in Pontiac, or from any mobile station that they want. They can literally log in on their phones or their iPads and fly it from anywhere. They will be the only operators currently that will be utilizing that drone system.
And how are we going to get billed for that resource, that time, those pilots?
It's included in our Patrol Services contract, just like if you were to call the SWAT team, or a K-9, or anything like that.
Okay, interesting, because when we went and toured that facility not too long ago, there was a dedicated group of individuals that were there, and we would have had at least some resources dedicated to Rochester Hills in order to fly that drone.
Right, it's a small unit, so it's going to be limited hours. When it's accessible, things like that, we'd have to on-call, right? But we will have access to that, just like any other special unit that the Sheriff's Office has.
There you go. So, if there's no incremental increase in our police budget to fly this thing?
No.
Sounds like a great deal, really does, because it looked like the value that we saw when we were there was immeasurable. So, I know who's shard's going to be happy.
He'll be happy.
So, thank you, appreciate it.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs.
I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland to approve. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of one drone as a first responder, DFR, and DJI Dock 3, in the amount not to exceed $26,412 to Drone Nerds, Miami, Florida, and payment of annual costs, including software maintenance and licensing fees, for the drone unit in the amount not to exceed $3,500 to Oakland County, Pontiac, Michigan, and further authorizes the mayor to execute any documentation needed in order to complete the purchase on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next up, item number 2025-0445, request for approval of this police school liaison program for the 2025-2026 school year contract between the Avondale School District and the City of Rochester Hills. Mr. Snyder?
I will take this one. Thank you, President Deal. And presented before you tonight is the 2025 to 26 school year police school liaison program between the Avondale School District and the City of Rochester Hills. This particular school liaison program covers one Oakland County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer, who's responsible for providing services to two Avondale School District Schools located within the City of Rochester Hills, namely Deerfield Elementary and Avondale Middle School. With that, Captain Workman and myself are available for any questions you may have.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Moreland, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer. And let's see, I don't see any further discussion or comment on this, so we will just go ahead and resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the Avondale School District Police School Liaison Program budget for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $171,325, and to invoice the respective entities for their contractual share of the program. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And then that moves us on to 2025-0446, request for approval of the police school liaison program for 2025 to 2026 school year contract between the Rochester Community Schools and the City of Rochester, Oakland Township, and the City of Rochester Hills. Mr. Snyder?
Okay, thank you very much. And this is the school year 2025-26 Police School Liaison Program contract between Rochester Community Schools and the City of Rochester Hills. This police school liaison program covers two Oakland County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officers, one Oakland County Sheriff's Office Detective Sergeant, and two Rochester Police Department Officers, who are responsible for providing services to the various Rochester Community Schools. With that, Captain Workman and myself are still available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We do have, Vice President Karlock?
Just one thing, on the sheet that you put together, there's a line item for five cellphones for $10,400. Are these some specialized phones that are ridiculously expensive?
Yeah, this was, well, it's a pass-through of exactly the amount, whatever the phones are, gets passed straight on to the schools. I believe it's just their build on what the actual cost is. No, I don't, I do not believe the phones are $10,000.
I highly doubt that.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
But whatever the amount is, that is passed along to 100% responsible for the schools.
Got it, thank you.
Very good. Let's see, we have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Vice President Karlock. And I'll read the resolution. It says, "Resolved that the City of Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the Rochester Community Schools Police School Liaison Program budget for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $892,330, of which, as a participating party, the City of Rochester Hills' contribution is $294,648, as presented, and to invoice the respective entities for their contractual share of the program. Be it further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the city." All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I guess we want to work on that cellphone contract, though. I'm pretty sure Verizon could get you.
I think it's probably an old number that should be revised.
I'm just going to put them on my bill, $35 a month.
Right. I very much doubt that it's actually $10,000. We can definitely check, whatever the amount is, if it gets passed on directly to the schools, but I guarantee you, it is far lower than that. Quite honestly, it's probably a number that we should check and review, because it's been in the contract for many, many years.
Very good. Thank you. Item number 2025-0388, Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Smart Municipal Credit and Community Interlocal Agreement. Mr. Snyder?
Okay, well, presented before you tonight is the SMART Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Municipal Credit and Community Interlocal Agreement between SMART and the City of Rochester Hills. The City of Rochester Hills receives annual municipal community credit funding from SMART, which can be transferred to qualified agencies to administer a transportation program, to be used for municipal van and bus operations, or even used to purchase services from SMART themselves. While the OPC has requested that the City of Rochester is continue, or consider and execute the municipal credit and community interlocal agreement, which will allow for SMART to coordinate directly with the OPC on an annual basis, as long as the OPC operates in eligible transit services. The city retains the right to terminate this agreement within 90 days, advance notice prior to the adoption of the municipal and credited, uh, community credit budgets for each fiscal year. But the OPC is running a great program, so I don't think we have any, need to do that anytime soon, but there is a clause in there. And if approved, this municipal community credits will be transferred directly to the OPC, and the City of Rochester Hills will continue to incur no costs. So, with that, I'm available for any questions on the SMART contract.
Very good. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, President Deal. Again, Mr. Snyder, thanks for taking the time the other day to talk this through, and the beneficiary is the OPC, albeit not a lot of money. I think we identified it as about $71,000 a year.
That's what it was last year.
It goes right to the OPC, and they know what to do with it. So, as a member of the OPC governing board, we thank you, we appreciate it, and I would move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. All right, I don't see any further discussion or public comment on this item. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the SMART Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Municipal Credit and Community Interlocal Agreement between SMART and the City of Rochester Hills, so that the funds can be transferred to the OPC Social and Activity Center on behalf of the City of Rochester Hills on an ongoing basis moving forward. It is further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute and deliver the interlocal agreement on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you very much. Now, there being no further business before the Rochester Hills City Council, we have a motion by Mrs. Bungioli, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned, and maybe you can catch the last, the fourth quarter of the Lions game.